Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Bretta Feld, Capriolio.
I'm here.
Chavez. Councilmember Olivier will be out all day today. Councilmember Brandau. President Soria.
Here. Great. So now we have the invocation by Pastor Karen Stover's pew from Wesley United Methodist Church. And then if we can all stand and remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Gracious and eternal God, we thank you for the gift of this beautiful spring day in Fresno. We are blessed to live, work, and worship amidst the abundance and beauty of this small spot in your creation. Surrounding our city and in backyards across Fresno, trees have bloomed or are blooming, setting new fruit for the harvest. Grapevines are sending out pale, tender green leaves as the spring rains and winds clear the skies so that we might bask in the beauty of your Sierra Nevada mountains. We thank you for the gift of your creation. We pray for the courage and commitment to be good stewards of it so that our children, grandchildren, and generations to follow might enjoy the beauty that is Fresno and the beauty of all your creation. Holy One, you call to our hearts to care not just for creation but for your people. Help us reach out in compassion to those around us who are hungry, homeless, seeking work and shelter. May we work so that resources are shared in such a way that no child or person goes hungry and all may sleep in peace and safety. We're thankful for the special people we celebrate and honor today. May you continue to lead them and all of us to create a better world through our individual and community actions. Now send your Holy Spirit to inspire, guide, and strengthen our leaders. Your Spirit is the source of wisdom and may your wisdom guide the words and actions of all here today. As decisions are made about our streets and land, our law enforcement and firefighters, vendors and contractors, may the decisions be just and may resources be used in such a way that all would know that we have been good stewards of all the finances entrusted to us. Now bless our leaders. Mayor Brand, Council President Esmeralda Soria, council members Oliver Baines, Steve Brandau, Gary Bretfeld, Paul Capriolio, Luis Chavez, and Clint Olivier with wisdom, strength, and courage. Be with all of us as we leave this place and go into your world, reflecting your light in our words, in our smiles, and in our actions. In all of your holy names, we pray. In the people of God said, amen.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have two changes. The, under the ceremonial, the presentation of certificates to the Fresno Youth Commissions is being moved to May 10th, 2018. And on the 10-15 items, the following sites will be withdrawn from consideration. Items 3, 4, 11, 18, 20, 25, 27, and 28, and they will be brought back separately at a later date. These are just individual properties that were removed.
Thank you. Would any of the member of the public like to speak on the consent calendar at this time? Oh, sorry, excuse me. I'm at the agenda. Would any of the councilmembers have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none. The motion carries 5-0 with councilmembers Brandau and councilmember Olivier absent. Next, what we're gonna go ahead and do actually before we take the consent calendar because we do have our quarterly employee awards, we're gonna go ahead and take those and then we'll dismiss everyone to the little reception that is, will take place after and then we'll resume with the remainder of the agenda. So I'll invite the city manager and, I don't know if the...
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Oh, come on. I've heard these departments before celebrate Employee of the Quarter. That was, that was not very good. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Okay, so I, after being at the last Employee of the Quarter, I thought we should probably do something a little bit different. I wanna hear from Parks right now. I feel like we need to have an award for the loudest department celebrating. There we go. There we go. And today I'm gonna put you up against the attorneys. Can I hear? Okay, so I guess today's impromptu award for department spirit goes to Parks. Sorry, attorney. Okay, so in any event, it is my honor to be here today to celebrate a handful of employees who are nominated by your coworkers for going above and beyond. In signing the certificates and looking at the list, I've had an honor to work very closely with a handful of the recipients and I can't think of, you are all so well deserved. One of them in particular, I work with daily, Michelle from our office. So thank you for the work that you do each and every day. You make Fresno proud, you make me proud, and I'm amazed every day at the work you all do. So thank you. So with that?
I just wanna say a couple things on behalf of our council. One, I wanna give our appreciation to every single employee, but definitely to the employees that are being recognized this quarter because if it wasn't without your service to the public and to the residents that we serve every single day here in the city of Fresno, our city wouldn't function. And so I just wanna thank each and every one of you for the critical work that you all do to make the city of Fresno the great place that it is. Thank you.
Good morning. We'll go ahead and get started. Right now, it is my pleasure to read these summaries of what these employees have done to have them be recognized by their peers. We're gonna start off with the city attorney's office and we're gonna recognize Christina Roberson. So Christina is a lawyer in the anti-slum enforcement team. Christina does an incredible job in working with DARM staff and the city attorney's team, team members in helping the community by causing slum properties to be improved. She is persistent and firm, yet always pleasant and optimistic in dealing with the worst of Fresno's rental property owners. She represents the office and the city very well. The city attorney's office is pleased and proud to have Christina as its Employee of the Spring Quarter. Congratulations.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, I think we might need a recount on who's the loudest group you're celebrating today. So just for the record.
Okay, our next recipient is not able to be here today because they're giving their service a jury duty, but it is Dell Estrabook and he's from the DARM department. But let me tell you a little bit about Dell and why he was nominated. He's honored today for not only his outstanding career but also his contributions in improving quality to the life for Fresno residents and countless friendships he has made within our city family. In addition to being the Parking Division Manager in 2014, Dell stepped up and was also the Code Enforcement Manager until late 2017. He continued his work alongside the city staff on the downtown revitalization and played an instrumental role in the successful opening of the Fulton Street. Dell has been a go-to person for a variety of divisions throughout his time at the city and he will be sorely missed. His institutional knowledge, get-it-done attitude, and friendship makes him a model employee. Dell and his wife Deborah are looking forward to retirement and working this summer. So congratulations to Dell. Next, also from DARM is Michael, I'm sorry, Michael Andrade. Is he here? Michael performs at an extremely high level and maintains a great attitude even amidst all the pressure he experiences daily. He has numerous mapping and data analysis assignments coming to him on a regular basis with unrealistic deadlines, but he pushes himself to get them done well and never miss the deadline. He serves a vital role for our long-range planning team and the DARM department. Michael is truly dedicated to our department and his profession. On numerous occasions, he has helped train and assist other GIS specialists in our department and other city departments. Michael is great to work with because he doesn't limit himself or the possibilities for implementing a project. Congratulations. We're gonna move on to the Finance Department and recognize Anita Viarrell. Anita played a huge role in the implementation of the new CAFRA software while still working on her normal job duties and completing the whole statistical section of the CAFRA on her own. Anita worked long hours and weekends to make sure all of her job duties were completed. Even though she has so many responsibilities, she is always polite and willing to help her coworkers whatever they need. She is a perfect example of a hard-working employee and that's why we've chosen Anita as our Finance Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Next is the Fire Department and we'd like to start off with Joshua Sellers. Josh has been a member of the Fresno Fire Department since July 2007. He promoted to Engineer in June of 2015. Joshua's work ethic and commitment to the department as well as the hazmat team is second to none. Josh has assisted with training on topics such as emergency decontamination, hazmat monitor use, and hazard mitigation techniques. He has also been involved in writing the policy for the department's new Tango TX1 CO Monitor. Josh is the type of individual that when asked to work on a project, he puts everything into it. The department and especially the hazmat team is lucky to have a committed and dedicated member like Josh. Thanks for all the hard work and your efforts are truly appreciated. Thank you. Also in the Fire Department is Ryan Tender. Is Ryan here? Ryan Tender transferred to the Public Safety Fleet Management Division in February 2017 and is the Automotive Parts Specialist supporting the Fresno Fire Department Maintenance Shop and Fire Stations. Ryan has been instrumental in setting up a new parts stockroom in the newly relocated fire maintenance shop. He accomplished this major task while simultaneously ordering and stocking parts, stocking and issuing for fire apparatus maintenance and repair orders. Ryan owns the parts room like a mechanic would own his tools. Ryan, thank you for all that you do. Congratulations. Moving on to the Information Services Department, we'd like to recognize Pedro Braz. Being new to the city of Fresno, Pedro came aboard and hit the ground running. Pedro was asked to help refine previous work done on the Rental Housing Registry Database. In the process, he was able to create a full-functioning application for DARM which allows inspections in the field using mobile devices along with robust applications that DARM uses to support the Rental Housing Registry Program behind the scenes. Pedro has also designed a mobile app for fax. My Fax Bus is the name of the app which was recently released with the launch of the BRT. My Fax Bus app allows bus riders to see specific information about bus routes, locations, and where the bus is expected to be next. Pedro has several internal projects in the works for ISD along with Parks, DPU, and City Managers Office. He always maintains a friendly, helpful attitude and his energy and enthusiasm elevates those around him. For those many and many other reasons, Pedro Braz is the ISD's Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the City Manager, Mayor, Council, and Clerk's Office and we'd like to begin with Michelle Marchini. Marchini is the glue that holds the City Managers and Mayor's Office together. She has a wonderfully positive attitude combined with energy and passion to do what it takes to get the job done even if it means sending emails at midnight. She's my boss, says the City Manager. But she's also the gatekeeper, friendly face, air control, air traffic control, problem solver, and cheerleader. She makes daily executive decisions on a multitude of moving parts, logistics, and issues. Michelle provides an exceptional quality of service to internal and external customers. Michelle is always upbeat, friendly, and has a smile on her face and a kind word. She is truly an inspiration and a joy to work with and a huge asset to the city of Fresno. Congratulations, Michelle. We have another person to recognize under this same department and this will be one of my favorites, Marco Martinez. Come on up. Marco exhibits great customer service skills whether he is dealing with the public or city staff. He demonstrates patience, empathy, positive attitude, and pays great attention to details. He is a team player and extremely knowledgeable when it comes to research. Talia Calori and the City Attorney's Office stated that Marco has helped me locate and compile official documents seven times, several times, and patiently walked me through how certain records are maintained on city projects. His assistance is very valuable in helping me move my work forward. And Phil Harcastle in Finance stated that Marco is a real trooper. It must have taken him hours on end to find these microfiche reels, scan them into Adobe, and then make them readable electronically. His efforts have hit paydirt. This is exactly what he needed to move forward to his next step. Marco goes above and beyond expectations and we appreciate all of his hard work. Congratulations. Okay, now we're moving on to the Parks Department. And we're gonna start with Daniela Gonzalez. Wow. As a Community Service Division Recreation Specialist in the Senior Hot Meal Programs, Daniela is primarily responsible for community outreach, marketing, and organized recreational programming. She really understands what it means to be a team player. Daniela is kind, dependable, good-natured, and always willing to help. For example, there are times when she has had to cover a shift at a meal site to ensure the seniors get their meals even though technically that's not her job. She is very creative and has developed trusting and solid relationships with seniors. Both staff and seniors find her a real joy to work with. We believe that she has earned the right to be named Parks Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Also in Parks is Todd McGill. Is Todd here? Mr. McGill has demonstrated dedication to his job and is driven by the results he has been able to achieve. While experiencing crew shortages over the last five months, he has been, he has taken upon himself to rally his coworkers and has assisted in creating and maintaining work schedules for irrigation projects. Very seldom does he present a problem with already having a viable solution for consideration. His positive attitudes allow him to mesh well with the rest of the crew and he has always been willing to fill in different areas when the need arises. Congratulations, Todd. Next, we're gonna move over to Personnel Services Department and recognize Sonia Farmer. The Personnel Service Department is pleased to recognize Sonia Farmer as the Spring Employee of the Quarter. Sonia has been in Personnel since June 2015 as a Senior Human Resources Technician. Sonia consistently demonstrates efficiency and coordination in conduct of examinations. She has been recognized for her attention to detail and commitment to delivery of effective service. Congratulations to Sonia Farmer for her selection as Personnel Employee of the Quarter. Now we're gonna move over to the Police Department and we'd like to start with Jordan Beckford. Sergeant Jordan Beckford supervises the Northwest Investigation Team. Not only does she manage investigative work, she also tallies statistical data for the Homeless Task Force and works closely with several community support groups to make Northwest community a safer place for all to live. It should be noted that all of the work Sergeant Beckford completed during the movement to the Northwest District Station was done while she maintained all of her normal day-to-day work activities and further assisted on a majority, excuse me, on a major body camera video audit. For all of her efforts in making a transition to the new Northwest District Station, it is a great pleasure to recommend Sergeant Jordan Beckford as the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Also in the Police Department is Robert Fry. Detective Robert Fry has been assigned to the Multi-Agency Gang Enforcement Consortium, which is also referred to as MAGIC, for approximately three years. Detective Fry first served as a member of the G.A.I.S. Team Metropolitan Tactical Team before being chosen on the Metropolitan Investigation Team. Detective Fry's primary responsibility has been to investigate black gangs. His talent and experience has led to his becoming a court-recognized expert in black gangs and he has testified in various courts around the state of California. In 2018, Detective Fry took the lead in investigating illegal gunfire during the New Year's Eve time period. The investigation led to recovery of multiple firearms, including assault rifles, and at least one ghost gun. Detective Fry is a hard-working and valuable member of the Fresno County's Law Enforcement Gang Team. Congratulations. Next in the Police Department is Lelani Maltevo. Lelani is a Senior Account Auditor and came to the Police Department in May 2016 as an Account Auditor 2. And due to her excellent skills and hard work, within five months, she was promoted to the Senior Accountant Auditor. In January 2018, Fiscal Affairs lost two vital employees. She stepped up to fill the gap and kept the unit running smoothly. She processed $9.6 million worth of account payable invoices in a year. Her professionalism, thoroughness, attention to detail during the past three months have ensured a seamless transition to the Police Department members. She goes above and beyond to provide great customer service to the public and members of the department every day and is liked by everyone. We are so glad she is part of our team. Congratulations. And finally, Mickey Burrow is gonna be recognized for the Police Department. Crime Scene Investigation Technician Mickey Burrow has worked in the Crime Scene Bureau for 21 years. Over his career, Mickey has received commendations from the Chief of Police for his work in identifying homicide, carjacking, and hate crime suspects in high-profile cases. In each case, he developed a fingerprint evidence at the crime scene that led to the identification of the suspects. The District Attorney's Office recently contacted Mickey's supervisor to advise him of the excellent job he did testifying in a recent trial. Recently, Mickey discovered that the police crime scene diagrams weren't being saved on the network drive correctly. He self-initiated review of all the crime scene diagrams and re-saved them so that they were secure on the correct drive. The task took many hours to do. Mickey's experience, latent print development skills, and photography skills make him a huge asset to the Crime Scene Investigation Section of the Fresno Police Department. Congratulations, Mickey. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Department of Public Utilities and we're gonna start with Rosindo Pasias. As one of the Solid Waste Management Division's Utility Lead Worker, Rosindo has shown his dedication to the division and willingness to go above and beyond expectations to ensure the job gets done. Rosindo's primary responsibilities involve leading a litter crew to complete daily tasks. This includes removing illegal dumping and littering, checking in the adult offenders, maintaining the tool room, and working with the Homeless Task Force Team. Rosindo has been able to work with many difficult homeless individuals and get along with his coworker. Rosindo peers describe him as someone who always goes out of his way to help others, a great team player, efficient, and inspirational. Rosindo is a very valuable employee and plays a significant role in keeping litter controls operations running smoothly. It is our honor to have Rosindo presented as the Solid Waste Management Division's Employee of the Spring Quarter for 2018. Congratulations. Also in the Department of Public Utilities is Nikki Fields. Okay, so Mickey is out today, but let me tell you a little bit about her. She's an exceptional employee that gives all of her, gives her all and strives to be the best in everything that she does. She is an excellent wealth of knowledge for new employees as well as veteran employees. Nikki is our customer service clerk with the lowest error ratio and often helps the veterans or the new clerks when they have errors that they don't know how to fix. She is always willing to step up and change her schedule to stay overtime and close down the counter at City Hall or even work the Manchester Center office without any hesitation. Thank you, Nikki, for all your hard work. You are truly a shining star. Also in the Department of Public Utilities is Steve Deeden. Steve is a valued member of the UPNE Work Team and the great assets to the city of Fresno. He is quick to learn new things and willing to lend a helping hand. Steve is DPU's lead person in city's endeavors developing and preparing for the implementation of the Acela Computerized Maintenance Management System, a citywide system that will incorporate different city data platforms such as license, permits, and equipment assets into one centralized resource. We appreciate Steve's initiatives, diligence, excellent work, and significant contributions to the Acela and UPNE teams. We are delighted to recognize Steve as the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations, Steve. Next in Public Utilities is Sandra Samora. Sandy is one of two senior laboratory technicians. Her responsibilities include organizing lab work, reviewing analytical data, and working in the lab if needed. Sandy's work is thorough, complete, and requires little or no supervision. When other senior lab techs have to take a few months' time off due to an accident, Sandy was on her own. But she rose up to the occasion, worked very hard, and stayed after hours many times to complete the day's task. During this period, the laboratory was audited by the California Water Board. Sandy was instrumental in preparing for the audit and meeting the audit requirements. Her hard work, flexibility, and dedication ensured the laboratory to run smoothly. Her hard work, flexibility, and dedication ensured the laboratory to run smoothly. The division fully appreciates her efforts and commitments to the city of Fresno. And last but not least, in the Department of Utilities is Robert Turner. Robert Turner is being recognized for his continued performance, positive attitude, and consistent level of professionalism and leadership skills. Robert came to the Water Division from another water purveyor in August 2015 with a skillset which has helped him hit the ground running with our organization. Robert is always ready to work, whether it's general maintenance, mainline break, or waterline installation. Robert promotes leadership not only by holding himself to a high standard but also using his previous experience. Great job, Robert. Keep up the good work and congratulations. Moving on to the Department of Public Works. And we'd like to first recognize Hairo Mata. Hairo has worked as an engineer, too, in our Traffic and Operations and Planning Division, and was recently promoted to Supervising Engineer Technician. His personality is perfect, is a perfect balance of technical and personable. He has a mind for engineering, pays attention to detail, can explain details to engineers as well as applicants that are unfamiliar with the process. He is personable, helpful, dependable, patient, and kind. He is a great asset to our department, and we are lucky to have him on our team, so congratulations Next in the Department of Public Works is Eric France. Is Eric here? Eric is an air conditioning mechanic in the Facilities Management Division and has been with the city almost five years. He works well with all of our customers, keeping them informed of ongoing progress and any issues that arise. Eric is a team player and is well-liked by his coworkers. He is always willing to jump in and try to find a solution to any issue. We are grateful to have Eric in the Facilities Management Division. He is an asset to the division, department, and the city. And last but not least, in the Department of Public Works is Michael, I'm sorry, where's Michael? Michael Cruz?
He's not here.
Oh, he's not here?
He's not able to be here.
Oh, he's not able to be here. Let me tell you a little bit about Michael. He's a maintenance and construction worker in the street maintenance, where he has worked since 2016. Not only is Mike a hard worker with a great deal of construction experience, but he's a team player with a great attitude. His positive energy makes a positive impact on the crew, and everyone agrees that Mike is a great guy to work with. Well done, Michael Cruz. Congratulations. We got one more. Yep. Do this name. There is one more in the Department of Public Works. James Zamontzyski. No, I missed that up. The Zimsky. Okay, so James is a parks maintenance worker, too. He is an employee whose attitude, experience, professional knowledge, and landscape experience makes him a valuable team member. He can be counted on day and night, no matter what the situation. James leads the park mowing crew that maintains the neighborhood parks in the southern part of the city. James is recognized as a leader on the mow crew and shares his knowledge and expertise with all crew members. James has received several compliments from park users for a job well-done and going the extra mile in keeping the parks well-manicured and maintained. Congratulations, James, and keep up the good work. So our final department is the Department of Transportation, and they would like to recognize a team of people this time instead of just one or two individuals. So as I call your name, please come up. Matthew Arnold. Robert Asensio. Juan Castanas. David Johnson. Nicholas Masaka. Daniel Ruiz. Gary Sargosa. Gus Sandate. Juan Torres. And Miguel Sanchez. Just gather in. Okay, so the Fleet Municipal Division proudly recognizes all the employees of the Light Equipment Shop as Employees of the Quarter for their outstanding effort during the relocation of the maintenance and repair operation. The Light Equipment Shop moved from the main fleet facility in Building F to a satellite shop in Building S1 within the Municipal Center Service Center. These employees were able to accomplish the move in a week while they continued to work on customer equipment and vehicles. This required a high level of teamwork and cooperation by all. All employees pitched in and did their part to make the move successful. The transition to the new location has been smooth due to their hard work and dedication to this, this group showed day in and day out. They are a great group who, who takes pride in their work, and they work very hard every day to provide safe and reliable vehicles for customers to serve the community. Thank you to all these employees for their devotion and commitment. Okay, so that concludes our program for this morning, and, and don't forget, we appreciate everybody coming. If there's family out there, we appreciate you as well. There is refreshments in the fore, so please help yourself.
Good morning. We're going to go ahead. We're going to go ahead and resume with the meeting, and right now, we have a special presentation by Councilmember Travis for Paul, Paul McLean, if you want to come on.
All right, we are awake. So it's not every day that you get to honor, maybe roast, your former boss. Paul was actually my supervisor at the Conservation Corps back in 1996, 97, something like that. And we had a pretty cool nickname for him. I remember the first time I met him, we called him Chuck Norris Fresno, because he had this like really cool mullet beard. He was a little more built back then, but he, he did just a phenomenal job with our youth in our, in our groups. And I want to share a quick story, because I think it captures your approach to our community and, and serving. And I know we have some Conservation Corps members today, and I'm a proud Conservation Corps member from back in the day. I think it was the first, first youth build class. And so I remember this day, one of my colleagues, that shall remain nameless, graffitied the, the restroom of the Conservation Corps. And this was when we were at the Stanislaw Office, before you guys have that beautiful new building that you now have over by California. And so somebody graffitied the, the, the word "force" on there, and I remember Paul called us all in and, and said, hey, you know, I want to know who did this, and Corps of District, no snitching rule that, that you had back then and still do. But nobody disclosed, and so Paul comes in and, you know, tells us, you know, whatever you guys do in life, you got to be the best. If you're going to be a graffiti artist, be the best. And so we're looking at him like, is this a trick question? Is he trying to get us to, to confess? And so I later found out that he was more concerned about the fact that the person that tagged didn't know how to spell the word "force." And so we had a whole week of correct spelling and pronunciation at the Conservation Corps class. But I think that, that captures really, you know, Paul's approach to, to our community, and even though you make mistakes, he never gives up, he never gives up on you, and he's always there encouraging you. And he's somebody that I always looked up to when we were out in the construction side. I think it was the span of homes that we were working on, and, and we used to rehab old homes and sell them back to the community and make sure folks had housing at the time, and I think we still do some of that. But he'd come out to the job side and make sure that everybody was getting what they needed to do, and, and that's really one of the best memories I have about Paul. And I think today we're celebrating, how many years were you at the? Thirty-two years. I was six years old when he started working there at the Conservation, at the EOC. But I know, Paul, you, you've done a lot of great work in our community, and, you know, if we could have Brian and Sean come on up, too. I think, you know, you guys and Michelle, we're putting the band back together. Come on down. Paul, we want to say a few words. You're 32 years. That's a long time. Our community is most definitely better off. I know myself, a lot of the Conservation Corps members that are now up and coming through there, you guys are the next generation of leadership, and a lot of that has been because, one, one of the Conservation Corps members come up, too. I think this is, this is, this is a family right here. Paul, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely, Luis, thank you. And I've got a lot of people to thank after the number of years that I've been doing this, and, and I do want to start, you know, with the City Council here. All of you, my very good friends that I've spent many hours with, talking to, sometimes lobbying fiercely with, but I always found that you believed in the same causes that I did and that we did at the EOC, and I'm so grateful. I am really so grateful, you know, for all of your sport over, over many, many years. This city is fortunate to have great leaders such as you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you. And to the, the city, the city manager, I know somebody acquainted with you from my days on, on the, on the ice rink, and so we have a little bit of a connection there as well. Good luck to you and, and your new position there. To the audience, Esmeralda, thank you as well. I think you were wandering somewhere, but appreciate all your time, you know, your support on the EOC Board and your leadership, you know, as the chairperson, the president of the board now, Gary. We come from the same neighborhood years ago, and so you were my councilmember then. Thank you for your friendship and your support and leadership here on the board as well. To all my friends that are here this morning, thank you. I am most grateful and, you know, for the work we've been able to do together. Brian was commenting about James Zamontzyski, and I didn't see him until I saw him come to the front for an award, and, you know, James was one of the Corps members when I was there and watched his career with a great deal of interest, and so proud of him. You were going to come last, my friend, so I'm not overlooking you. So I, you know, too many people here to, to name individually, but thank you for all the good work that you continue to do. And I've always believed, you know, that the generation that follows will, and they will do more, they will do better, and that's the way it should be, and I, and I see evidence of that. Sean, the, the Corps is in great hands. I'm very proud of what you've been able to do in the last eight years, eight, nine years now. Michelle was a very big part of our success there for 13 years and continues to do some amazing things with the EOC Sanctuary. Brian, I can't say enough about his leadership, the energy, the creativity, the innovation that he brings to EOC. He's a great leader. He's been a great friend of mine, a great supporter. He's taught me a lot of things, and, and I'm a better person because I've had the opportunity to work with Brian, the accomplishments there. Naomi is in the audience, also one of my colleagues for many, many years. She's a few years longer than me. No? I try to get the number of years out of her, but I, I can't, but really the bedrock, the bedrock, you know, the anchor of the agency, managing all the programs. Thank you. Thank you for all you do and, and your friendship. Luis, this, you're, you're just an amazing story to me and everyone who's been acquainted with the Corps, everyone in this community who's gotten to know you. You know, we've come full cycle, and you talked about coming into youth build. You've never been shy about talking about your background, and you shouldn't, and you've never been shy about your progress, and we honor all the great things that you've done throughout your career. I remember running into you after you'd been, you finished your master's program, and it'd been a number of years that we hadn't been in touch, and I was, I was, I was, I don't know what I was. I was shocked, I was surprised, but, but, you know, you have, you have really epitomized, you know, what the Corps is all about. I mean, you're, you're the poster boy of the Fresno Conservation Corps, you're the poster boy of Conservation Corps nationwide, and you're also the poster boy of what community action is all about nationwide, because remember, we nominated Luis for a national award a couple of years ago, and he came to Washington and accepted that award in front of probably 2,000 people, 1,100 agencies nationwide. He rose to the top. I wrote the nomination partly because I knew Luis well, but it was one of the easiest nominations I've ever written, because when the substance of the nomination is the person, it's so easy. And, and he's, he's, he's just an outstanding individual and has done outstanding things and has an outstanding career future ahead of him. I'm honored that you're doing this for me today, Luis, and thank you so much. Thank you to those who came out today. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be in this community, and we are always, you can always count on our support for all the good work you do, all the good work that the city and its leaders do. Steve, you came in. Thanks for everything you do. Great leadership on the board, great friendship, enjoyed all the times we've had together, working together on issues. Thank you.
This is exactly what Paul does. He takes an event about himself, and he makes it about our community. And I think this captures just so beautifully his approach to our community and why he's such a great leader. And I know you're not going to go far from, you know, I'm still going to bug you and pick your brain, as I usually do, but I just wanted to thank you for your 32 years of service to our community. We do leave the Conservation Corps in great hands with Sean, Michelle, with Brian, even though he's a Celtics fan, we forgive him, and a Red Sox fan. Okay, you're going to leave now. But the Conservation Corps, that's who we are. We're, we're a family, and, and we're alumni, and we never forget that, and I hope that our young folks that are here never forget that, too, and give back to our community later when you're in a situation where you, where you can do that. And so with that, oh, here's one more, of course.
There's a person standing in the back of the, the room that means a great deal to me, and I want you to come to the front here, but that is my wife of 31 years, Gail.
You get to have him back now.
Just say, just to say publicly, you know, thank you for everything that you've done to support me, and you've been with me all these years. Very important.
So with that, Clerk, we'll read the proclamation, please.
Where is Paul McLean Legowski? For 32 years has been employed with the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, Fresno EOC. He has made a tremendous impact on the lives of residents of Fresno County and has recently announced his retirement effective May 1st, 2018. And whereas Paul started his career at Fresno EOC as a summer youth program eligibility worker- worker in 1986. And whereas in 1992, Paul founded the EOC Sanctuary Youth Shelter, the only 24-hour self-referral shelter from Bakersfield to Stockton for runaway, homeless, exploited or displaced children currently in its 26th year of operation and has helped save the lives of thousands of youths by providing access points at over 266 safe place sites located in Fresno area. And whereas in 1993, Paul founded the Fresno EOC Local Conservative Corporation, LCC, celebrating its 25th anniversary in 2018 and is responsible for training, education and development of thousands of young adults ages 18 to 25 during his tenure. And whereas, under Paul's guidance, the LCC became the first California local conservation program to operate a youth build program, and the LCC led to the state and county and Conservation Corps and youth build movement and re-entry initiative for formerly incarcerated young people believing in their right to a second chance. And whereas, under Paul's leadership, the Local Conservation Corps expanded into a new $16 million, 60,000 square foot training campus, the Reverend L. Swilless Neighborhood Youth Center, NYC, due to his belief that it was important that those underserved neighborhoods have a top-notch work and training environment. And whereas, in 2015, Paul was bestowed the honor of the Corps Legacy Achievement Award winner by the Corps Network, which leads and supports the work of over 130 of American Service and Conservation Corps. And whereas, the Board of Commissions of the Fresno EOC has granted the honor of naming the vocational training facility of the Local Conservation Corps in his honor, so future Corps member attending the program will have a direct link to his legacy. And whereas, Paul's most recently served in the capacity of Chief Innovation Officer overseeing the Planning and Resource Department and having secured over $320 million in grant money for the agency, those it serves. And whereas, we will continue to be forever grateful to Paul for all of his hard work and dedication efforts in securing a better future for our community over the last 32 years. Now therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 19, 2018, to be Paul McLean-Lukowski Day in the City of Fresno.
Paul, and I just wanted to say a couple of things too, if that's okay, Madam President, while they're taking a photo. And this is a tremendous loss to the community of Fresno. The career of Paul McLean-Lukowski over at the EOC is certainly one to be treasured. I have had the personal opportunity to work with Paul on a number of issues. And Paul, you just, you really are what it means to be a person that serves our community, a person that serves this public, and a person that cares for so many others beside himself. I thank you personally for your services, community. I know you won't be far, but not having you at the day-to-day operations over at the EOC is a tremendous loss. We thank you as a community for your service.
And I would, may I? I would like to add, last year, Oliver and I traveled to Washington DC with Paul and on the One Voice Trip where we advocate for some of the things that we need most in our community. And Paul, you spoke to workforce development and getting our workforce ready for the projects that are in front of us. You spoke passionately advocating for our community, as did Oliver. And I appreciate the passion you have for Fresno.
Thank you. So I also just wanted to add, Paul, you know, thank you, and I'm glad that Councilmember Chavez got the opportunity to provide this special recognition because it's truly special. Special that you were with this great organization for 32 years. And I had, as you mentioned, the pleasure of working as a commissioner and saw in my short tenure just the kind of commitment that you have for the clients that you serve and then also for the greater area in terms of the city and the valley. And so I want to commend you for the great work. And I share the same sentiment. I think that it's a, it's a great loss to the organization and to our community, but we wish you much success in your future endeavors and in your retirement. And we just want to thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done in impacting people's lives.
So before we go on to the next thing on our agenda, I did want to recognize some special guests that we have here up on the second floor. So we, throughout the day, my staff and city staff is working with about 160 students that come from Baird, 40 students from Quail Lake, and they're touring our City Hall. I just want to give a little brief about why they're here. They're associated with the Middle School Democracy Project organized by the Fresno County Civic Leadership Partnership. This partnership includes four different schools. It includes Baird, Sutter, Cooper, and Quail Lake. So today, all the students are participating. Today's students have completed a civic service duty. And so I want to thank all the students, welcome you to City Hall. Thank you for learning about civic engagement. And I know that you guys are our future leaders of our city and of our region, so I just want to commend you for your participation. I know that we also have a couple of teachers that I just want to give recognition to, Mr. Wilkins and also Shane. So thank you for your commitment to helping our future leaders. And I know my council colleague, Steve Brendo, wanted to say a few words.
I just wanted to give a shout out. Everybody sitting below, you can't tell, but the balcony is full of students from Baird. And we appreciate you coming down. The last group that just passed through, I tried to get them to hold tight, but you're the group that gets to get recognized. So we do appreciate all the, all the great students at Baird and for coming down and getting engaged in your community. So give a shout out to all of our students at Baird. Thank you for coming.
So next, we're gonna do, excuse me, consent calendar. And then if any items are polled, those will be heard in the afternoon, just because we do have some timed items, which I think started at 10:15. So what we'll do right now is consent. So would any council member like to pull an item for discussion? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, I will be pulling item 1M, and we will hear that later this afternoon. So what I will do, I know that there's maybe a couple of people that did want to speak on some of the consent items. So I'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to provide any comment on the consent calendar? And I know, are you Stuart? If you want to come on up, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. My name is Stuart Chandler. My business address is 761 East Locust, Suite 101 in Fresno. I'm a civil trial attorney in Fresno, a proud fourth-generation Fresnoan, and I'm here to address item 1K, which is ID 18-0441. And I would urge the council not to adopt that resolution. It has to do with the Office of Independent Review, and I'll tell you why. The Office of Independent Review, as you probably know in a reading from the city's website, is, it says that it works to strengthen community trust in the Fresno Police Department by providing neutral third-party review of police policies, procedures, strategies, and internal investigations. The OIR works independently of the Fresno Police Department and provides the city's leaders and the public with objective analysis of policing data, actions, and outcomes. And it goes on to say that the work of the OIR is guided by the following principles: independence, fairness, integrity and honesty, transparency, participation of stakeholders, and acceptance, and cooperation, and access. Respectfully, this resolution would diminish, and it would run contrary, to the stated purpose of the OIR for having transparency and independence. And I'll tell you why. Because currently, the Office of Independent Review is supposed to be an independent evaluation of conduct of the Fresno Police Department. But the resolution would go to say as follows. Currently, it says the OIR will not have access to city privileged attorney-client communications, both orally and in writing. But the resolution would have, the OIR shall have limited access to city attorney-client privileged information and be subject to attorney-client privilege anytime the OIR is involved in confidential communications with an attorney for the city. The OIR shall not disclose any attorney-client privileged information outside of the context of an attorney-client privileged setting. If the OIR has any questions about the extent of the privilege, he or she shall consult with the city attorney. If adopted, what's going to happen is the OIR will have communications with the city attorney's office, and then everything that's happening with the OIR in that particular review is going to be cloaked in privacy and secrecy. And I think that what's happening here is an effort by whoever's put this together to try to have more secrecy and contrary to the transparency that the OIR is supposed to have. I'm happy to answer questions about it now or later. Always available with the City Council. I appreciate everything you folks do. But I think this is a very, very misguided effort, and it's going to run contrary to what this office is supposed to be. If you do adopt it, I would urge that you also go through and change the language of the OIR and scratch the words transparency and accountability. I don't think they would belong there anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on any of the items on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Brendo.
Yes, I appreciate the comments. City Attorney, do you have any comments related to what Mr. Chandler said?
Well, briefly, what I can say is that the Office of Independent Review has several functions. One is to respond to complaints and that sort of thing. The other is to help PD improve policy. And to do that, it may be helpful if he can sit in on certain meetings that are intended to be confidential. And he can use that information to help, for himself, to help generate improved policies for the police department. If he's not subject to attorney-client privilege, he can't do that. Because then we can't have those meetings going on with him there if he's not subject to privilege. So that's the purpose. It's not to deal with direct complaints or anything like that. It's not to keep confidential his investigations that he's doing. It's so that he can participate in certain meetings so that he can help PD improve policy.
Okay. So you don't feel that it will, as I think Mr. Chandler is saying, somehow adversely impact the ability for the office to be more transparent?
It should not.
Should not. Okay. Thank you.
So there was a motion by Councilmember Capriolo and a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the consent calendar passes 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent.
Council President, I have a point of order question I'd like to ask.
Great.
I see a lot of folks in the crowd today that are here for an item that I believe is going to be polled from the agenda. Actually, there's two items. One is dealing with Sierra Racket Club, and the other is a farmland mitigation item. If I could ask the city manager for clarity on the items that will be polled from the general plan update.
Yes, and is Dan Zach in the audience? At the beginning of Dan's presentation, he was gonna go over the entire list of, there are a handful of properties that will be polled and moved to another date, and that will be at the very beginning of his presentation. I believe the two that you just mentioned are going to be polled and moved to another date, and they will be re-noticed.
Okay. So for folks that, I just recognize some of the folks, maybe the other three items also have people that will be waiting. I don't want to see you folks waste your time, waste your day. The items regarding Sierra Racket Club or farmland mitigation will not be voted on today. And so you're free to go. You will be noticed. My office will specifically send out emails when that will come back to be heard again. But it might give you more time to learn more about the issue, but it will not be voted on today, and I wanted to help you out in case you wanted to move on with your day. Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Brendo. So what I'm gonna do, because we do have some timed hearings, I'm gonna start with the timed hearings and, actually, does any of my colleagues have councilmember reports and comments? We'll do that, and then I'll go to the hearings. Councilmember Capriolo.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few things here. Last Tuesday, we kicked off the grand opening of the season with the Grizzlies. There was a fantastic turnout. We honored Jose Ramirez for his championship status now from the Central Valley. And it was a great event. And I wanted to invite everyone to attend the Grizzlies game on April 28. Why April 28? That's Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in the city of Fresno and at the stadium. And they were gonna honor and celebrate the sacrifices of our veterans from Vietnam and their families. So I encourage all of you to attend that game. And Grizzlies are doing great. New ownership, new management. It's a great day to spend with your family. Next, last Wednesday, I had an opportunity to welcome home the veterans on the 15th Honor Flight coming out of Fresno. I wanted to thank Kevin, the airport manager, and his crew. They did a great job, and the event always shines when they touch it. And I also want to thank all those that support the veterans and their families. We had, I think, close to 400 people out there, and it's really exciting. And I had a little moment to speak. I said, you know, that people think Disneyland is the happiest place that day. It wasn't. It was the Fresno Airport with all the veterans returning and their families. And it was, it was really exciting. So they have another flight coming in and watch the newspaper. We invite you all to come down. It's quite a moving event. Last Sunday, we had our quarterly neighborhood picnic at Sierra Madre. I want to thank the mosque who hosted the event. Fresno State ASI students are very, very active in the fraternities as well in the area of District 4 and the university. We had about 400 attendees there, and the Fresno Police was there. Appreciate that. Fresno Fire, the kids love that. They get on, climb on these apparatus, and really have a good time, and I think it's really exciting. Along the lines of the mosque, they'll be holding their annual, annual free health and dental fair at Manchester Mall. So Member Olivier asked me to announce that. That's on Shields and Blackstone, Sunday, April 29, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Tons of services for adults and children, all free. And the mosque sponsors that every year. So if you have anybody that needs those services, be sure and be there because they do a great job. I wanted to thank Scott Mosier, I think Scott's in the room here. Thank you, sir. And his street team, they're making Eldorado better and better every single day. They touch it every day, and it gets improvements and improvements. We thank you for that. And also Detective Danny Kim from the Police Department and the Fresno State Police Department for their hard work and collaboration in that neighborhood. We're really picking it up. It's truly becoming Eldorado Park. With that, I thank you, and I'll see you all at the Grizzlies game on April 28.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolo. Next, are there any changes to the minutes? Oh, I didn't see you, sorry. Councilmember Brendo.
These microphones are kind of hot today, so I've got to figure out where I'm right at here. I would like to, I mentioned earlier when we were recognizing Paul about the One Voice Trip to Washington DC, and I'm gonna be attending that again this year. As a matter of fact, I'm leaving on Saturday through next week. And what we do is we advocate for some of the things that our community needs. And one of the things that I'll be specifically advocating for is for Veterans Boulevard. We've turned in a grant application for Veterans Boulevard in November. We're gonna go out there and meet with our lobbyist in Washington DC. He's gonna lead us to the right people, and we're gonna basically be saying, please select us. Their selection process is happening right now. So we want to be back there while they're making their decision, reminding them that Fresno needs some help. In all reality, we've done most of the work ourselves. This council with the mayor and former mayor have acquired all the pieces of property for Veterans Boulevard, some 40-something pieces of property. And we're shovel-ready, and we're hoping that the federal government will recognize that. Also, I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Barbara Bush, who just passed. And I really believe Barbara Bush was an inspiration and a fantastic lady. And she, as the first lady, she took it upon herself, a reading initiative, to get people engaged in reading, to get children engaged in reading across our nation. So I'd like to adjourn our meeting in her memory.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Brendo. We will adjourn in her memory. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of April 5?
No changes.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilmember Capriolo, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. So next, we're gonna go to our timed items. What I'm gonna do, we're gonna go, because I know we're a little bit behind, we're gonna go to our 10:10 AM workshop, the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board. I know that the mayor is in the room. And so we'll go there. And then after that, we will go to our 10:15 hearing. And then once we conclude that, we will go back to the first three 10:00 AM hearings. So right now, we're doing the workshop, the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board, 2017 Fourth Quarter Report. Fourth Quarter Report.
Good morning, everyone. President Soria and councilmembers, thank you for giving us this opportunity to give you an update on the Citizens Public Safety Advisory Board. Just in a brief summary, when the mayor comprise the advisory board, it's a nine-voting member panel which reviews my reports and also reviews what's going on with the police department, et cetera, whether or not they think there may be some corrective action needed, some recommendations, et cetera. And we also have five non-voting advisors that are there from the police department, the DA's office, the city attorney's office, and also myself. And we have our chairperson here today, Debbie Hunsaker, and she's going to give you a summary of what they have accomplished to date and what they have been doing since they were put together back in mid-August. And so Debbie, it's yours.
Thank you, John. And thank you, members of the city council and Madam President, for allowing us to give our first quarterly report. We've been busy these last several months. This report covers the period through January of 2018 and during that time period, we spent the majority of our time going through training at the Regional Training Center. Each member completed 24 hours of active training at the center and each member also did a ride-along with the police department. But before I get too far, I want to recognize my committee members or my councilmembers who are here and thank them for their support. We have Ava Spriggs is here, Vernon Crowder, Monica Diaz, my vice chair, James Parks, and then also on our committee who weren't able to make it this morning, Ike Greewall, Amy Guerra, Michael Vang, and Clifford Williams III. We've been busy primarily getting our administrative items out of the way. Anytime you have a new board, you have your growing pains and trying to get policies and procedures. But the number-one priority was to do the training because that's important to have that foundation where we know what officers actually do out in the field. We also learned through the ride-along process that when you're actually out there in an active police situation, your perception can change dramatically. You realize how quickly things are moving and it really, I think, I speak for all the members when I say that we were all surprised at how the operations in the field actually work. So what we did, we first had our first meeting back in September and we mostly dealt with the administrative matters, which is our paperwork. So if we hurt ourselves on the job, then it's on us. And then we had our first official meeting in November and Mindy Castile of Internal Affairs came and did a PowerPoint presentation, explained their role, and then we reviewed our bylaws. And then in December, we watched some training videos. We discussed confidentiality because we will be talking about matters that we can't talk about outside of our meeting. And then we reviewed our training schedule and then one of the issues that we started talking about was the social media issue. And then in January, we continued the social media conversation. We got some input from our partners and then we started discussing bias-based policing and then we want to prioritize future topics. And that could include use of body cameras, ATLU report, use of force, community-based policing and those type of things. But before we could get into actual issues and really start getting to the meat of things and hopefully bringing forth some good recommendations or observations, we needed to get the training under our belt because that was very important. And we did have the opportunity to review an internal employee survey that's going out and many of our members had some comments and suggestions, which I thank FPD for incorporating those into their survey and we will be reviewing those in the near future. So next report, I'm sure will be a little more meaty, but this was mostly our organizational quarter, our get-through-the-training, figure-out-where-we're-going and what we're tasked with.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, Debbie. You're very active in our community and your leadership. I see my good friend Jim Parks in the back, who's a member. You've got a great group. You've got a tough task, but with your leadership and the quality of people that are involved with this, I see nothing but great things coming from it. So congratulations and thank you all. I appreciate it. Please pass that on to the entire board. I appreciate it.
I will do that. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolo. Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, Debbie, I appreciate the report and what you're doing. I liked what I read in terms of your training and the ride-alongs. I mean, I think obviously all of that's very important. People don't fully have an appreciation for what it is and what police officers have to do and the high stress that they deal with every day. And of course, when we review things, incidents that take place, we do so either from the comfort of our home or in non-stressful situations. So it's always very easy to do an analysis when the stress isn't taking place and you found out, I think you've done some of this kind of stress training. So I think that's very good. You know, as I've been clear, I've had some reservations about where this advisory board will go. I've been fearful that it might be used just to be critical of the police, but that's not the direction it seems to be going. And I appreciate the fact that you are getting such extensive experience and training with what officers do. So I look forward to the additional reports that come forward and I want to thank you and the members for what you're doing.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Debbie, for your presentation. I think it's great to get the first report and see everything that you guys have been doing up to today, so I appreciate that. I did want to give the mayor an opportunity. I don't know if you wanted to come up, Mayor, to, you know, share with us a little bit about the work that your office has been doing with the committee.
Yeah, good morning. I want to personally thank the advisory board who put a lot of hours in on this training. I didn't realize how much was there. A lot of this was based on the initial, you know, formation of the committee and the rules and bylaws. And Damon Kurtz from the POA was very instrumental in recommending these kind of condensed courses to give all the members the opportunity to see through the eyes of what a police officer sees out in the street. Also, we did, I want to thank John Gliata, our director. We changed not only this advisory board, but we made the OIR a full-time position that lives in Fresno and connects to the community. So I think it's very critical at this juncture and as they go forward, they will be looking at policies, practices, procedures. They don't look at individuals. And we want to be preemptive and proactive in identifying issues before they become major incidents. And I think, I want to thank our police department and our chief of police, Jerry Dyer, for the great job they've done to keep civil order and recognize everybody's democratic rights, free speech. And so far, it's good and I appreciate the support of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, Debbie, for the presentation and also thank you to all the board members who have committed their extra time and volunteer time to be part of the board and provide their perspective on these important issues that can be foreseen. I know that the training is great. As a councilmember, I've been able to go to ride-alongs to better understand, again, as mentioned by my colleagues, what officers go through on a day-to-day basis. So that is great to hear. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is a 10:15 hearing to consider the Plan Amendment Application, number 818003, and it's by Darm.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, Dan Zack, Assistant Director with the Darm Department. And I'm here to talk about the latest General Plan Development Code cleanup item. We've had two of these previously since the adoption of the Development Code. This will be our third. And it's maintenance to the big policy changes that went in a couple of years ago to keep them relevant and current and working well. Before I proceed into my presentation, I want to make note of a few changes since the staff report went out. So site number two of the Plan Amendment and rezone could be considered today, but it's going to be considered as a separate second action that we'll highlight at the end as there'll be Action A, Action B, and this would be Action B. And then from the main action, there will be eight sites that will be withdrawn from consideration today. We're going to do a little bit more analysis and outreach on these sites and then bring them back at a future date that is yet to be determined. Those will be sites number three, four, 11, 18, 20, 25, 27, and 28. So those will not be considered today. And then from the General Plan Amendment, the General Plan Text Amendment component of policy RC9C Farmland Preservation Program will also be withdrawn from consideration today. So the remainder of the cleanup bundle will go forward. So the cleanup is broken into two main parts. There are Development Code text changes and then Planned Land Use/Rezoning changes. So part one is the text changes to the Development Code and there are several, a couple dozen changes, and they're all made or proposed to be made for clarification of things that were a little bit uncertain to make the document internally consistent and consistent with state law and just improved functionality. Most of them are very minor, but I'm going to highlight just a couple. In January, we talked about potential changes to mixed-use zoning districts, especially as they pertain to certain corridors like Belmont Avenue. And Councilmember Olivier had initiated a discussion of that back in January. And so those changes are all reflected in this text amendment. Essentially, what they're doing is allowing a broader range of uses within the mixed-use zone districts and adding flexibility in there to allow a greater number of different business types to go into these spaces. You know, some of the buildings out there on these mixed-use corridors kind of fit the vision of apartments above shops and then other uses out there don't quite fit with that. They evolved in a different way over time and so we want to be flexible to allow those sites to continue to adapt and be able to get tenants in there. We also, in the same spirit, are proposing a change to the legal non-conforming provisions for mixed-use districts only. Wouldn't apply citywide, only to mixed-use districts. And these are the districts where the general plan kind of envisioned the greatest change and a transition from kind of auto-oriented uses to more of a blend of commercial and residential uses that are more focused on transit and pedestrians. But we wanted to recognize that some of these buildings are not very adaptable kinds of buildings and were geared toward auto-oriented uses going way back. And we wanted to extend their legal non-conforming rights for up to five years after the use is vacant. Right now, it's a one-year period and then it would have to return to a permitted use with the next occupant. So we wanted to extend that to ease the transition in these areas. We also are proposing some changes to the signage rules downtown. We wanted to reflect that downtown, you know, has traditionally had bigger signs and, you know, we want to create an exciting atmosphere downtowns. We wanted to modify for building-mounted projecting signs to be able to be a little bit better, but also up the quality bar and focus on better materials and lighting, but allow bigger size to kind of match our traditional pattern downtown that we used to have in the heyday of downtown. So part two is the zoning and planned land use changes. The background on why we do this, just for anybody who is curious, we adopted a new zoning map for the entire city back in 2016 to make it consistent with the general plan and implement the general plan. And some areas didn't change much. Some areas changed significantly. And so staff was directed by the council to accept cleanup requests in the wake of that. And the criteria were that a property owner could request a cleanup if they were proposing to go back to a zone district and a land use that was similar to what they had before the general plan. And making such a change wouldn't be inconsistent with the general plan or any important policies in the general plan. And then it would need to be consistent with the master environmental impact report and not create any additional impacts that weren't already addressed. And so if it met those criteria, we could bring them forward to you to be considered, to take those folks back. And so the properties that we have today meet all those criteria and are consistent with the previous two cleanups that we've done. This map shows the 28 sites spread throughout the city. There's a couple in each council district and in each part of the city. I can go into detail on any of them that you would like. We have a table in the packet that goes into detail. I know this is not legible. I just wanted to kind of make the connection between the map and the table for you. We took all these changes, the map and text changes, to the district implementation committees, our two design review committees, Airport Land Use Commission and the Planning Commission. All of the design review and council district implementation committees supported the staff recommendation, as did the Planning Commission. The Airport Land Use Commission recommended approval of the staff recommendation except for the rezone and land use changes to sites three, four, 18, 25, and 28. And those are in the group that I mentioned at the beginning that we're recommending to withdraw from consideration today. And we're going to circle back with Airport Land Use Commission and then bring those back to you at a later date with the other ones that are being withdrawn.
Hey, Dan, really quick, 27 is off that list as well.
Yeah, that wasn't one. That was part of the Airport Land Use Commission, but it is part of what is being withdrawn today. Yep, correct. That one is due to a property owner request. And just to reiterate, site number two will be Action B for you to consider today. These sites, as I mentioned at the beginning, will be withdrawn. You can see site number 27 there, Councilmember Baines, withdrawn at the request of the property owner. Couple others due to the ALUC action.
Dan?
Yes?
I guess in terms of some of these withdrawals that happened, is it because the owners didn't receive direct notice?
Um, no.
And they found out later? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, why all these issues at the last minute.
Yeah, I can actually identify for each of them the reasons. On site number three, four, 18, 25, and 28, it was due to that ALUC action and they wanted more time to understand these changes. So we're, like I said, we'll circle back with them. Site number...
What do you mean, the ALUC?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Airport Land Use Commission.
Oh, okay.
So all five of those were in an airport zone and any land use change or rezoning within an airport zone has to get a recommendation from that body. If they do not vote in the affirmative, then there's a process to go through to continue on with that item and it has a certain, you know, time requirement and so on. And so that prohibits us from moving forward with those today. Site number 11, we wanted to do a little bit more analysis and outreach on that one. That's a site around Chestnut and Huntington in southeast Fresno that was formerly multifamily. It's all occupied by multifamily uses, but it had received single-family zoning with the general plan. With site number 20, that is a site actually on city property that was going to have its land use changed and the plan out there is changing and so this cleanup would no longer be applicable and so we need to revisit that one.
So it wasn't a notice issue? That's why we need additional time?
No, uh-uh. And then site 27, the property owner actually withdrew the request.
Um, I just want to clarify with Councilmember Chavez because we're having a side conversation...
But we are going to notice.
Yeah, that was site number 11 in particular. We want to do more outreach over there.
More outreach? So that's the issue? So I'm asking the issue in terms of some of these challenges that we're facing is because of the notice.
I wouldn't characterize it that way. The notice was all done in the proper fashion.
In terms of the legal notice, I get that. And so in a few minutes, I'll, I guess, make additional comments, but I just wanted to, as you're going through these sites, get kind of the gist of the issues as to why these things were withdrawn because I do have some concerns with the type of notice that we're providing. I know that we're meeting our legality, but I think as a body, we have to think policy-wise when we're doing cleanups and it's not thousands of properties, but only a handful, that we may want to do a little bit of better noticing, like individual noticing. So I'll just make additional comments in a few minutes, but I'll let you continue.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is a... This is a summary table that shows kind of the cumulative nature of the changes that I mentioned at the beginning. So item number two, which is grayed out there, that will be Action B today, just separate consideration. And then the properties highlighted in yellow are the ones that we'll circle back with at a later date that are being withdrawn from consideration today. And then the remainder in white will be open for your consideration this morning. So the staff recommendation for the first action would be to adopt the environmental assessment, approve the plan amendment for sites one, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 26, and not policy, the farmland policy, withdrawing that. And then approve the rezone, the same sites as shown, and then approve the development code text amendment. And then Action B would be to approve the plan amendment for site two and approve the rezone for site two. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dan. So we'll go out to the public, and I know that I have a few folks that turned in some cards. So I'll go out to those individuals first, and then if I don't call your name, but you still wish to comment on any part of this item, you will go ahead and be able to come up. So first, I have Jack Surt Fager. I don't know if I have that name correctly. And he might have left. Okay, so next I have Daniel Stein. And then William Hancock. And these folks may have left because of the comments that were made earlier from Councilmember Brando. But if there's anyone else from the public who I didn't call who wished to comment on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none. If you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President. Daniel O'Connell, 3261 East Kircoff. I wanted to make some comments in general about general plans. And as about three or four years ago, inspired by Keith Burgholdt and emboldened by then-Mayor Swearengen, I moved to the Iron Bird Lofts in downtown Fresno. My front door was on the second floor, and I wanted to walk the walk. I moved from rural to Larry County into the urban area of Fresno. It was a bit of a shock. And when the general plan passed, I, as the developers would say, voted with my dollars. I purchased a house not too far from here on Kircoff, just near Councilman Chavez, who I sometimes see as partner walking on Huntington. You need to walk more on Huntington if you live on Huntington. I mean, it's such a jewel. When I talked to community at that time, tons of outreach following on the heels of the extraordinary outreach by the city, I would describe general plans as the economic constitution of a city or county. And I cautioned them that, as we know in our nation's history, that these values, principles, policies are going to be violated and tested. And that's, in some ways, okay, because it shows how much diligence and determination we are going to put into enlivening them and defending them. So I just wanted to broadly mention that I think that there is the possibility of movement and flexibility in the land use component of the general plan. There should be. When I first came on, Councilmember Baines and myself were at a Smart Growth Conference in St. Louis, and I got to taste that wonderful barbecue as well. And one of the things he mentioned to that national audience as this general plan was moving forward was that he was unaware at the time of how important land use was. And land use is basically going to, and I'll finish up with this, it signals to the business community of where we're going to invest publicly and privately. So it's really important. And I look forward to a broad dialogue with the League of Women Voters and other stakeholders in talking about this. We can't, we're not going to litigate through this. We need to have a broad stakeholder. And Councilmember Brando, you've mentioned, bringing together the county and the city has to do that, the Farm Bureau, the building industry. And if we're going to have a coherent city, we'll have to get this right. And there can be compromise across the board on this. Thank you for postponing it, and I look forward to further dialogue on it.
Thank you, Daniel. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. You made a motion?
Yeah.
So a motion by Councilmember Baines. And I believe this item, actually, I have to take a couple things separate. So can you go ahead and...
This would be the balance, other than what's been removed, and subpar 2B and 3B.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take the first two where I don't have a conflict. But I did...
Let me just, my mic's not working. Do I need to make two separate...
It went off, too. Mine did.
Do I need to make two separate motions?
Yes. Just one for now.
So what is my motion now? City Attorney?
I assume is to approve the staff recommendations, except for what's been removed and except for items 2B and 3B in which Councilmember Soria has a conflict.
Let the record reflect. That's my motion.
Perfect. So there's a motion and a second. Before we take a vote on that motion, I just wanted to make a couple comments in regards to noticing, which I alluded to earlier as you were doing your presentation, Dan. And so, one, I will say that I'm glad that there are some of the issues that came up through this process, that we are delaying them and that we're going to give folks more time and opportunity to discuss in terms of what will be the end game for them, both on specific properties and then in terms of also the agland preservation piece of it. I think that's important for us to continue to have a dialogue, because I will be very frank. I wasn't aware about the agland piece being part of the changes. And I think when we met originally, and I want to thank you for taking the time to come by my office to meet with me and explain to me with due diligence the properties that we're going to be changing in my district. But at that time, I didn't get even told that you guys had the agland portion as part of these changes. So that, to me, is a little bit troubling. I think that, for full-on transparency, we need to make sure that we're having that discussion. And so, you know, I've been a vocal council member on the issue, and so I'm glad, obviously, that this has been postponed, but, you know, just for future, I think that, in all transparency, that we are having that dialogue. And second, I just wanted to also talk about the notice component. I know that the city of Fresno didn't notice, and if you go to the council, well, the items that were posted as part of the documents, part of the item, we have the copy of the notice. And I was looking at it, and by looking at it, no one in the city could really have known if their property was being impacted unless they would have called us directly. And so that troubles me. So I know that the notice provides, you know, meets our legal requirement, but when we are talking about 20 properties or 20 different sites, I think that as a body, this body needs to think about what kind of notice policy we want to have. I'm all about supporting, you know, bringing back these cleanups, which I was in support of initially, because I do believe that when we went through the initial process, it was a lot of work. And I know that you guys did a tremendous amount of outreach to make sure that people had noticed about the changes that were happening, which is why we're coming back again and doing some of the cleanup. But I think that we need to rethink about how we're providing better notice. I know that our notice complies with the legal requirements, but if owners don't get notified or the neighborhood around them does not get notified that there's going to be some changes that will impact them in the future, I have a problem with that. And that, to me, is a process issue. And while today maybe the outcome of these changes are positive, I think when there's a process issue, you know, sometimes I'm going to question that and not going to be able to support. So I just want to make sure that that's clear so that as we're looking forward, and I know that we're probably going to come with another round of cleanup, that we're really looking at providing better notice. And I don't know what my other colleagues think about the notice component and if you guys want to chime in on that. But I think that, you know, when we're talking about property rights, I think that it's important for folks to know what is happening to their actual parcel, if it's changing in terms of the rezone. So just wanted to make sure that that's on the record, and that's something that in the next round, I will also, again, call for and, you know, look at how the notice is being provided again, because even though we may have published it in the Fresno Bee, you know, and with all due respect, I know there's a Fresno Bee reporter here, not everyone reads the Fresno Bee. And even maybe some of the property owners could be speaking a different language. And so if you look at the legal notice, it's just, it's hard to tell if your certain property would have been impacted by the changes that we are going through today. And so just wanted to make those comments for the record. Other than that, I will go ahead and take the first vote, and then I will step out for the second vote. But there is a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. So Councilmember Brando, if you want to just take over.
Yes, we're ready for your second motion.
Okay, City Attorney, my second motion needs to be an approved staff recommendation for items 2B and 3B?
That's correct.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've already gone out to the public on all of these items, right? So we don't need to redo that again. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I've got a quick request for administration. For the next round of cleanups, if we could get our staff to come around the district offices, a little bit more time, and flag the properties that will be going through the rezone, that'd be very helpful.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Great question. So again, let's vote again. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six, excuse me, five to zero. Council President Soria, Councilmember Olivier absent. And then we have one more. Is that correct?
No, that's...
Was it? Okay, perfect. So we can go out and get Councilmember Soria. I don't know which item on the agenda she wanted to move to next.
Thank you, Councilmember Brando. Next, we'll resume back to our 10:00 AM hearings, the 10:00 AM number one, which is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding city of Fresno, CFD number 11, annexation number 86.
Good morning. I'm Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. Here, as you said, with an annexation to CFD number 11 at the request of the property owner. This is a subdivision being built by Lennar Homes. It consists of 100 units, and the rate for each unit will be $449.45. We have received the ballots back. All were in agreement with the CFD. And this is in Council District 3.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Baines makes a motion. I'll second that motion. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have the 10:00 AM item number two, also Public Works.
Thank you. This is also an annexation. This is to CFD number nine. This was in Council District 6. This is a multifamily apartment complex on the corner of Copper and Chestnut. We have received the ballots back. The landowners are in support of the CFD. The annual assessment is $1,329. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Butterfield makes the motion, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. The next hearing, we have a 10:00 AM hearing, number three. It's a hearing regarding the authorization of non-exclusive franchise tow agreements with 29 local tow operators.
Good morning, Council President and members of the council. My name's Deputy Chief Andy Hall. This will be a follow-up meeting to our introduction for the tow franchise agreement, which came before the board on April 5th. It was approved unanimously. We are now coming back to the board for authorization to allow the chief of police to execute that agreement, as well as the recommended changes to Article 17, Chapter 9, Section 9-1707 of the municipal code as it pertains to tow operators.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion for this item, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries 6-0. We're going to move on to general administration. So we have item 3A is an actions pertaining to Gate 6A remodel and passenger boarding bridge project at the Fresno-Yosemite International Airport District 4 airports.
Council President, Council, good morning, still. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. This project is going to do two things for our airport. One, it's going to provide a loading bridge, which means at a ground gate just past Starbucks on the left where you see Alaska operate out of. And this really means that folks will be able to get onto the aircraft without using the stairs that you typically see on ground loading operations. They'll be out of the weather. It'll be conditioned space. Also, we will be remodeling the interior piece to open it up so we have more seating. And really, the impetus to this project is for us to accommodate larger aircraft, which is what the airlines are moving towards. What we'll be able to handle right now is just the smaller regional jets with the stairs or even the occasional turboprop that Alaska flies to San Diego can operate out of that gate. But now, with this project, they will still be able to operate out of that gate, but also we'll be able to accommodate 737s, Airbus A320, those family of aircraft. So it gives us that additional capacity that we currently don't have. And as you know, we are getting busier, and we're getting busier with a lot of larger aircraft, including the item that you previously approved for Frontier Airlines. They're bringing in the Airbus product as well. So in a nutshell, that's what the project is about. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We will go out to the public now. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, but I also wanted to say again, thank you. The Honor Flight is such an intricate part of our community, and your team does a fantastic job, Kevin, in many, many ways. But that's the most recent, and there were 400 very, very happy people and families last Wednesday. So thank you for that, sir.
Thank you. And regardless if it's 400 or 1,000, the noise level is just the same. Thanks.
That's right. Proud, proud. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. So we have a motion, second by Councilmember Chavez. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, that motion carries 5-0 with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier absent. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item 3B. This is the approval of the second amendment to the agreement between the city of Fresno and Medias Airport IT Americas.
Thank you, Kevin Michael, again, Director of Aviation. Okay, this is an existing airline operating platform that we have at our airport. This is another five-year extension to... This is another five-year extension to that system. What that system does is allows essentially any airline, whether we, it's a current airline operating in our airport or a new airline, for example Frontier this May 22nd, to utilize any gate or any counter position they choose depending on, you know, how busy it is. And what this system does for our airport, a smaller regional airport, is it, is increases the efficiency of the facilities. And, and we've had this system in place for now about over 10 years, or just about 10 years, and it has already extended the useful life of the facility significantly. So we don't have to do an expensive bricks and mortar project. We anticipate we'll continue to see that extension of useful life. However, I know at some point in time we will need to look at some bricks and mortar as we complete our master plan, but that's what this is doing, is extending that existing platform. And all the airlines are on board and even all the major airlines that we don't currently serve are using this system at other airports. So it's an environment that they're, that, that all the airlines are familiar with. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you again. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Capriolio.
I think we're on, yes. Again, make a motion to approve and it's a pleasure working with the crown jewel of my district, the airports, FYI. Thank you, sir.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries five zero with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll go to item 3C. This one is an approval of a three-year enterprise agreement with Software One to provide Microsoft, Microsoft licensing to the city in the amount of 2.3 million.
Good morning, Council. Brian Horn, CIO. The item before you is renewal of Microsoft licensing through a company called Software One. Staff has a, going to purchase this off of a competively agreed upon, I'm sorry, excuse me. We're going to purchase this from a competitive agreement off the County of Riverside, which has been, which gives us the deepest discounts that we could get, even if we were to go out on our own. There are several companies that can purchase off of this or provide the software off of this agreement. And what we did was we took these different companies and we got bids from them and we were taking the lowest bidder off the agreement. It's a three-year agreement. This allows us to ramp up the cloud services in year two and three. So the agreement, it will be, the amounts will be different each year as we add software licenses to be able to move over to the cloud. I've got Microsoft here in the audience and council staff's here to answer any questions and I thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go out to the audience. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear. Motion by Councilmember Chavez, second by Councilmember Baines. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries five zero with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we'll go to item 3D. This is approval of a professional consultant service agreement in the amount of 1 million with Sand Tech Architecture, Department of Transportation.
Morning, Council President, Councilmembers. Jim Shev of the Department of Transportation. This item is to hire a design consultant firm to start the design work on our main facility, the maintenance and operation facility. And this design work is continuing to address items that were identified in a facilities assessment and master plan that was done a couple of years ago. This particular work is the highest priority items identified in that assessment. The improvements are, there are multiple improvements. What it will do for us is it'll improve our bus servicing. We clean buses every night, so interior, exterior cleaning facilities and fare box vaulting, which is emptying the cash box. Also will improve safety and security around the facility, increase parking capacity for our employees, lower water usage and lower electrical costs, and facilitate electric bus charging. The engineering cost is approximately 10% of what the estimated construction costs are, which falls in line with what we would expect. About 30% of that work will be done by a local firm that's a subconsultant of the Stan Tech Group. My staff and I are here to answer any questions you might have on the issue.
Thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brettafield.
Hi, Jim. Just a couple of questions. So this million dollars, how long is it gonna take to complete what they're planning to do?
The engineering work should take about eight months to complete. And the construction, we're anticipating around winter of 19 or spring of 2020 to have all the construction completed.
Okay. And so the engineering services, it says to, to implement the plan, and then you talk about construction, can you talk a little bit more about specifically the construction and what they'll be doing?
Sure. So we've, we've broken this down into about five elements that the engineering firm is going to deal with. The largest elements are really the bus wash, cleaning facility, which is 30 years old. Most of the equipment in there is antiquated. It does not reclaim water, so that's a large portion of the construction. The second largest is our parking lot for our employees. That parking lot, we've reached capacity in, in parking or providing parking for our employees. We just outgrown it. Redoing the parking lot will address and provide about 30 more spaces. And it, the parking lot really needs to be resurfaced anyway, so it would address that as well. There's some smaller items, electric bus charging, that is a thing that we're going to have to face. California Air Resource Board is going to be requiring us to purchase electric buses. That is a significant amount of electricity that will have to be brought in and PG&E will be involved in bringing that service in as well. And then there's a couple of smaller ones, some changing in access gates to make it easier for our employees to get to, into work, as well as our buses to enter the property and separate employee vehicles from the bus traffic. And then the last one is fire, fire alarm systems. We have a significant amount of fire safety alarms in the property and it's really cleaning up that and monitoring it. Right now, it reports, our firing, our fire systems report to the MSC complex right next to it. It makes it confusing when the fire department is brought in or when, when they're noticed, they go to the wrong facility and then they have to be redirected. So that would just allow for correct reporting there. The construction will be bid out on five separate contracts, that's the plan, based on those five elements.
And these guys will do the designing regarding these buildings?
Yes.
Okay, and all the other areas that you talked about?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So the, the screen is clear. Is there a motion on this item? Motion by Councilmember Chavez, I'll go ahead and second that. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries five zero with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, we have item 3E. It's an action related to the supplemental reimbursements for the Urban Growth Management and Development Impact Fee Program, Public Works.
Good morning, Council President. Councilmembers. Scott Moser, Public Works Department. This item relates to the city's Development Impact Fee Program, which has reimbursements every April and October. The purpose of this item is really some good news that we received a larger than anticipated amount of revenue in certain developer fee programs, which works then to reimburse developers who've built facilities above and beyond their fair share. They're now in the list. It's a first-in, first-out program. So it's a total of $944,000 of developer reimbursements for street work, traffic signals, water pipelines, as well as well sites. So with that, I'm available with any questions you may have and would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilmember Baines, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries five zero with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier Next, we have city council items. Item 4A, it's a resolution instituting a pilot program to incentivize job creation along the Ventura-Kings Canyon Corridor east of First Street. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, President Soria. First of all, I wanna thank the administration for helping me craft this. I wanna thank the Fresno Chamber of Commerce for their support as well. This is a, a pilot program for the Ventura-Kings Canyon Corridor. And we are really trying to, to craft another tool in the toolbox for economic development. Some of you know that that's an area that has its challenges with regards to high unemployment, with high levels of poverty. We included some of those statistics in there. And as it stands now, we have about 28 empty parcels along the corridor, a number of storefronts that are empty. During the recession, we peaked at about 30-plus percent vacancy rate. We're at about 14, 15%. We'd like to cut that in half and that really is the background for bringing this forward, having a tool to really incentivize folks to come and invest in, in specific communities. And I'd like for that to be considered today. Would definitely appreciate a yes vote and with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. We'll go out to the audience. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, just wanted to ask, is this only like for startup businesses, is that?
It's for new construction and abandoned storefronts.
Okay, not, it's not the existing ones?
No, no. And, and another restriction too is it can't be a business that's already within the city. It has to be from, from without. We don't wanna just incentivize relocation of, of businesses from elsewhere, that wouldn't be productive.
Well, I wanted to just commend you for, you know, trying to be innovative and being innovative and coming up with ways that we can all improve the community and, and your district and other districts and just like we did with other companies that have come here, we incentivize to create jobs, that's what it's about. And appreciate your efforts and the mayor's efforts in trying to come up with something very creative. I'll certainly support, support this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. And I just wanted to add, you know, I think that this is great and I'm excited that Councilmember Chavez has brought this policy forward. You know, we've been working, this council has been working to try to attract, obviously with the mayor's office and, and the staff, to attract more companies and jobs, to create more jobs for the community. So I think it's great to see that we're gonna be incentivizing small businesses. I think when we think about our local economy, really it's supported by our small businesses that are here and committed and loyal to being in the city of Fresno. So I'm excited about what this pilot program can do. I know I've kinda had a sidebar conversation with Councilmember Chavez. I think it would be great to extend this, this pilot program to a similar corridor in the tower, just on the Olive area, if we can look at maybe between Blackstone and Palm, which is very similar to, to Kings Canyon and experiences some of the same challenges in terms of vacancies and so forth. So I think it would be great. I don't know if that's something that we can talk about adding.
You know, if I may, we, the, the administration would really like to look at, our recommendation is to look at this corridor in particular as a pilot program. Let's see if it gets the results we want and revitalizes that corridor in particular. Who takes advantage of that, the, the cost associated with it? We're gonna have the controller and finance very engaged in this process. So I'm happy to meet with you after this 18-month pilot program to see if it is working and any adjustments that we might make, et cetera, before we expand it to other corridors.
Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I wanted to just, I took a moment to read this and Councilmember Chavez, this is a very well-thought-out policy and I'm excited and hope that it works in this corridor. And like Councilmember Soria said and the city manager, if it works and, you know, it'd be looking to expand it to other corridors, but well thought out, very timely. I think it capitalizes on the idea of how we do the right types of incentive programs for, for particularly our small businesses. And I appreciate, appreciate the fact that you're focusing on, on some of our smaller business owners, which really make up 80% of our, of our, of our businesses and workforce. So well thought out policy and happy to support.
Thank you.
I think I punched up next.
It didn't come up, that's why I hadn't called you, but you are next.
Thank you very much. Well, I just wanna advise you that I've had a discussion with Member Chavez about implementing that on Shaw Avenue, so you'll kinda have to get in line since I got to him first. So we'll see how it works in 18 months, but I worked with Mr. Chavez, Member Chavez, and he does great work and I look forward to expanding that to Shaw Avenue in District Four. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I think we have Nathan from the chamber, if you wanna come on up.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council, Nathan Alonso with the Fresno Chamber. Here to speak in support of the item, we think that this is a very well thought out and a, a solution that will help, like Councilman Baines said, the majority of our businesses in our community, especially those in that corridor. So small business is the heart of Fresno. Two-thirds of our members are employers of 10 employees and less. And in southeast Fresno, this item is gonna help give those folks, many of which are first-generation business owners, many of which are women-owned, are minority-owned, the opportunity to expand and to do great things in southeast Fresno. So we are proud to be here in support of it. We think that this is a win for Fresno overall, but a win specifically for those businesses and business owners in southeast Fresno. So we congratulate you and we hope that all of you support this item.
Perfect. Thank you. So there is a motion and a second. All I will add, I'm glad again to see this moving forward, I'll be supportive. And I'm looking forward to looking at these other corridors, as mentioned by Councilmember Capriolo, there's a number of commercial corridors in the city of Fresno that need some of the same incentives that we provide the big corporations. Because again, I think as mentioned by the chamber, the majority of the businesses here in our community are the small businesses. And so it is important that we also provide these types of incentives. So there is a motion and a second. And any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries five zero with, five zero with Councilmember Brando and Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take unscheduled communication. I do have one card and this is Petros Demos, Demos? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly. If you wanna go ahead and come on up, state your name and address for the record. And sir, you're gonna have, you're gonna have three minutes. You will have three minutes. State your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Petros Demos. Address is 8883 North Archie Avenue, Fresno, California 93720.
You'll have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Distinguished President Soria and distinguished council members, as I stated, my name is Petros Demos and I have lived in this great city of Fresno in District Six, Councilmember Breckfield, Brettafield's district, for 18 years. I worked as a transportation engineer in Caltrans and I became a citizen of the US in 2010. It's an honor to be in this council chamber and say a few words on behalf of the Eritrean American community that has been living in the city of Fresno as it swam since the 1980s. I'm here today to appeal the decision conveyed to us on April 17, after we submitted an application to the city of Fresno for a proclamation to recognize May 24, 2018, as the 27th Independence Day of Eritrea and raise the Eritrean flag in front of the city hall. The reason given was the small number of Eritrean Americans living in the area and as citizens of the US, we think it's unfair. Eritrea is among the six newest countries in the world, located in the Horn of Africa along the Red Sea. We Eritrean Americans are always passionate to celebrate the independence of Eritrea every year. every year because it was achieved after centuries of colonial rule. During the last part of the occupation, Eritreans had to struggle 30 years and pay a heavy price of 65,000 soldiers, not counting the civilian casualties. Due to Eritrea's small population, every Eritrean household had lost at least one loved one. We have 21 Eritrean American families in all the seven districts of the city of Fresno, Councilmember Capriolo's District Four being the winner with five families, and Councilmembers Brando Chavez, Breffels Districts Two, Five, and Six, respectively trailing four families competing to be second. Eritrean Americans bring in a rich cultural and historical heritage to the city. For the last 10 years, we have been active participants at the Caltrans Annual Diversity Disability Awareness Day event, celebrated with other communities. And we would like to reach out and expand our connections with the rest of Fresno residents. If we are given the chance to celebrate our biggest day at the city hall, it will be a big honor for us and all minorities living here. We understand that the three communities that raised their flags in the city of Fresno City Hall are the sister communities of the Greeks, Armenians, and the Mexicans. And we also understand that when they started raising their flags, they were as few as 15. Therefore, we are here today to ask the distinguished council members to support our request and be given the chance to celebrate our independence with the residents of the city of Fresno by issuing a proclamation raising the Eritrean flag for one day, as is the custom for others. Distinguished council members, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demos. Thank you. Next, if there's anyone else who wishes to comment during this unscheduled communication period, you can go ahead and come on up. If you can, if you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Carmen Navarro. I live at 1241 North Vagades, Council District, Mr. Baines District. The reason I'm here today is to just remind you of a vote that you took November 9. On that date, you approved the establishment of a senior center for the city of Fresno. I was here a year ago when you were discussing the budget and I asked you for a senior center then. There was no money put in the budget for the senior center then, but because of your vote in November, I would like to ask you, and I would like someone to make a motion when the appropriate time is here, to vote for the monies to establish one. We can't have one if we don't have the funds. So when you consider the budget for this coming year, I'm asking that you make the motion and approve it to establish the senior center with funding. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment during this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the dais. So we're pretty much up to our lunchtime. We have a few things left. We have closed session and then some scheduled afternoon items. So we'll go ahead and recess for now for lunch and then come back at 1:30 to finish the remainder of the agenda. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started, finish out the agenda for the day. We have some special proclamations. So first, we'll start off with Councilmember Luis Chavez. He's doing a proclamation for Angela Moreno.
Good afternoon. Oh, everybody's sleeping. Yeah, I know. I had a big quesadilla over lunch, too. Needed a nap. Welcome, welcome to City Hall. Today's a very extra special day for me. I know that most of us in the audience have had a family member or a friend, lives touched by, by cancer. We know that that's debilitating disease, but today we have a really positive story to highlight today. And I want to share with you that, as I read the article, and Angela, if you could come up, up here, I know she's a little shy. But, but this story really captures, you know, not just survival, but resilience and perseverance. And even in the midst of all that, we have somebody that opened their heart and really wanted to give back to our community. And so many of you read that, that article and it touched me, you know, as somebody who has a close family member that, that went through that, we shouldn't wait till October to bring awareness to that issue. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this up today. And so we wanted to recognize Angela on, on her work and her effort of paying it forward. And she also requested, a little bit about, her and I, we were actually both classmates at Roosevelt, proud rough riders. And once I, alright, we got some rough riders in the room. And so once we, once we found that out and I told her, actually, there are additional rough riders that lead the city with Mayor Lee Brand being also a rough rider, just so you guys know. And Councilmember Capriolo, come, come on down. We're putting the bandband together again. But we wanted to use this opportunity to, to bring awareness to, to this issue. And in speaking with Angela, we talked a little bit about her, her plans on really forming a nonprofit and making sure that we can pay this forward to other members of our community. We know that this is a very tough issue and many of you have seen your family members go through that. I have personally seen that. We all help and, and that's really what the, the theme of this story is about our community, that we come together, we help each other out, even though it's a little challenging. And so I wanted to take that opportunity to celebrate it. And so with that, Angela, say a few words. There you go.
I apologize, I am nervous. But I am a breast cancer survivor. I was diagnosed in 2000, I was 21 years old, and it was one of the hardest battles I had to go through at that time. Had something like this offered to me at that time, it would have been a great deal in the healing process. What I do, I'm a hairstylist. I've been a hairstylist for nine years and I like to give back to anybody that's dealing with breast cancer-related issues, whether it's a lumpectomy, double mastectomy, reconstruction, you're unable to move your arms because you can't wash your hair or take a bath. So I like to offer my services for free, where I wash their hair and blow dry them. So they come in when they can and give them a good wash, feel good, they tell me their story, we cry a little, and then they go on their way. It's that little bit of detail that gets skipped in the healing process when you're dealing with anything breast cancer related. I may have battled my breast cancer back in 2000, but I carry the gene with me, so I know it's just a matter of time that it may or may not come back. So I know that something like this would be nice to have in the future for myself and for anyone else that's going through it. And also, my goal is to have other hairstylists around cities, different locations that people can contact, so they can do it too. So it's not just Fresno-located based. And since the article came out, I have two coworkers that joined on forces with me. So it's great to know that this is just, this is just the beginning of something great.
Do you guys want to come up? They're a little shy, too. Mayor, do you want to say a few words?
Echo the sentiments of Luis and how courageous you are and how inspirational you are. And I could never say no to a Roosevelt grad. I'm really proud of you. You're welcome. Hey, go Roosevelt. And just for the audience, Fresno High never gets the little brown pig. Roosevelt, it's a permanent home there, sorry. She's someone shaking their head, you know, it's true. Come on. And I wanted to thank you as well. And my mother is a double mastectomy breast cancer survivor, so this is so important to, to, I get chills thinking about that. And without people like you, it would make that healing process so much more difficult. And keep going, can't say enough good things about you. You are a typical rough rider with your commitment to the city of Fresno, and we thank you from the very bottoms of our heart sincerely.
Thank you. So we're going, before we read the proclamation, we're going to make this, I'm going to make this, this commitment, I'm going to make this commitment to help Angela establish, we talked about that network, we're going to keep the conversation going and hopefully we'll have something to announce in October. Maybe you can come back and, and we'll see, you know, how much behind the city has had because we got to keep this at the forefront for folks that are maybe not so much informed, but don't know about it. And, and I think the awareness piece is a big, big part of the prevention that we need for, for battling this, this disease. And so with that, clerk, can you read the proclamation, please?
It is with great distinction and pride that we join in honoring and congratulating you on all of your hard work and dedicated service that you have provided over the years to women healing from breast cancer-related issues. As a cancer survivor yourself, you recognize the importance of being there for your fellow community members during their recovery and healing process by providing a way for them to feel good about themselves. A simple hair wash and blow dry to make someone feel better about themselves can make a huge difference on their road to recovery. We truly appreciate your contributions to help create a better quality of life for people who are going through cancer treatment. Our city gratefully acknowledges your many accomplishments. Please accept a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the city of Fresno for all your kind services that you provide to our community. It is individuals like yourself that truly make Fresno an all-American city. On behalf of the city of Fresno, we, Mayor Lee Brand and Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim April 19, 2018 to be Angela Moreno Day in the city of Fresno.
Next, we're going to be doing a proclamation for the Peace Officers Memorial Day, and I will be joining Councilmember Brettafield. And then I will stay down there to do the Earth Day presentation. Councilmember Olivier was supposed to be here to present with me, but unfortunately he couldn't join us. And then I have one additional presentation to do for Friday Night Live.
Officers, you want to come on up?
Hey. How you doing? Hi, how you doing? Well, we want to recognize an important event coming up, National Peace Officers Memorial Week, where we recognize obviously the tremendous sacrifices of our law enforcement personnel, our public safety officers. This morning, we were talking about all of the responsibilities that police officers have. People don't quite understand that they, almost on a daily basis, have to deal with life and death situations, stressful situations. Unless you've experienced that, you don't know all of the great things that these folks do. For me personally, I admire our police officers, our law enforcement personnel. They have a tremendous job. They're our frontline defense. They make us all safe and they sacrifice every day, leaving their families to ensure that we're safe. And some of them pay the ultimate sacrifice and lose their lives. And we never want to forget the sacrifice that these officers have made. And that's why we have this, this memorial week and recognize them, and we want to do that today. So thank you as a representative of our police department for what you do every day. And I'm going to have Council, President Soria, say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just also want to join my colleague in recognizing this peace memorial that we have here locally. I think, as he mentioned, it is important that we recognize our men and women who are in the front lines every day, fighting the battles and ensuring that our neighborhoods are kept safe. And just, you know, one fact that I learned as I was looking at, you know, the celebration of, of our memorial, is that 100, 140 officers to 160 officers are killed every year in the line of duty. And that's no small number. And I think that it's important to recognize, again, the men and women that today serve, but those that have served and those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for all of us. Because it is not just them that are gone, but it is the families that are coping with not having their loved one here present. And so I'm just very proud that this year, our community is celebrating 20 years, that we will be celebrating 20 years next month of having a peace memorial where we do acknowledge the importance of our men and women who are on the front line. So again, thank you so much for, for your service.
City clerk, would you, please read the proclamation.
Whereas the mayor and city council of Fresno acknowledges the sacrifices made by men and women of law enforcement in Fresno County who lost their lives in the line of service to its citizens and to the ceremony in their honor, celebrated at noon Thursday, May 3, 2018, in Fresno County Courthouse Park. And whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, and that members of the Fresno Police Department recognize their duty to serve their people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Fresno Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the City Council of Fresno, do hereby call upon the citizens of Fresno and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of Sunday, May 13 through Saturday, May 19, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all people may join in commemorating the law enforcement officers, past and present. Be it further resolved that we call upon all citizens of Fresno to observe Thursday, May 3, 2018, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in Fresno, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen heroes.
Next, I want to call up Peter McDonald, Rita Bowe, and Debbie Jean. So I want to thank these three individuals, Peter, Rita, and Debbie, who are here, they're community members, active here in the city of Fresno, to accept the proclamation to acknowledge Earth Day, which is April 22. And that's a very important day because it's also my birthday. No, it is awesome to celebrate, to be able to acknowledge and celebrate Earth Day. I know that just this past week, on April 14, last weekend, we were able to celebrate at Radio Park, do a celebration again to bring awareness in terms of what Earth Day means and the challenges that we have in keeping a healthy environment here in our local community. So I'm just very proud of the work that folks have done, that continue to do every year to bring awareness. And that's what we need to do here in our communities, continue to educate folks about the environmental challenges, the air pollution. We know that the, that our county and the city, we rank kind of at the bottom when it comes to air quality. And by making sure that we educate and make people aware of the issues and challenges, they can ensure that they are better stewards of our environment and making sure that we keep our planet healthier and safe. So thank you for the work that you guys do. Did you guys want to say?
Just a few words. Please extend a thank you to Councilmember Olivier for instigating this and a thank you to everyone in the council. We've been doing this for about seven years. We get about 2,000 people who come to our event and we have about 65 organizations from the Forest Service to recycling companies, to solar companies. And what's truly wonderful about the event is how many children this size, and Debbie this year was absolutely marvelous in creating programs that helped them to learn about the environment, clean air, how important clean water is, and get involved. So I want to thank the council and I urge everyone here next year to join us. And we did it a week early, Earth Day is this weekend, we did it a week early because we partnered with the Fresno Art Museum on this event. we partnered with the Fresno Art Museum on this event, and that was the weekend they were able to do it. So, again, thank you, President Soria, it's wonderful.
Thank you so much for being here. City Clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas Earth Day was founded by U.S. Senator Gaylord Nelson on April 22, 1970, and whereas
the, to give this proclamation proclaiming the work that has been done in the underage
Earth Day is now the largest non-secular event in the world, celebrated in over 190
drinking, or to prevent underage drinking.
countries by more than 200 million people annually.
And so what we want to do today is recognize Friday Night Live, the program, which was
And whereas all people on this earth have a right to a healthy environment, and whereas
designed to reduce alcohol use and other problems among the young people here in our
expanding environmental education and climate literacy is vital to enhance awareness about
community, and not only in our community, but throughout our nation, we have these
the environment, inform decision-making, and protect future generations.
types of chapters, which provide youth the opportunities, not only for leadership and
And whereas it is important than ever to act locally and to continue the environmental
advocacy. Here, the local chapter was launched in full-force campaign against underage drinking.
progress that has been gained thus far, now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee
So, the young people identified the issue and have been working very hard to combat
Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of April
that. In America, here in the United States, alcohol is the most widely misused substance amongst
to be Earth Day Fresno 2018.
The next proclamation that I have is the Underage Drinking Prevention and Friday youth, and underage drinking remains a considerable public health challenge. Underage drinking is responsible for over 4,300 annual deaths among our young people, very, very large numbers that we need to curb, and the work that they're doing is instrumental Night Live Month, so I will call up all the young people, Yami, if you want to come on in that. It is linked to 189,000 emergency room visits for injuries and other conditions. down, Jose, and the young people that are here. In Fresno County, the onset drinking age is nine years. It's pretty startling. We want to thank the Youth Leadership Institute and our City of Fresno Youth Commission, who have taken steps towards bringing awareness of the underage drinking problem by partnering up with various local liquor stores throughout the county to place over 2,000 stickers on alcohol packages containing six drinks or more to inform the adults about the social host ordinance, which fines adults who supply minors with alcohol beverages in their home, up to $1,000 for each underage person consuming such drinks. They did a survey also, and the survey demonstrated that 70% of young people obtain alcohol from an adult they know, and 37% from an adult family member, that is a family member. So, today, we are presenting them a proclamation in part of this campaign to, again, bring awareness to the issue of underage drinking. We want to make sure that our community is aware, that we're educating, and that we recognize the work that these young people have done. Obviously, it's coming from them, and they identify that the issue is a great issue here, not only in the City of Fresno, but in our county. And so I want to commend them for their work. So, do we have a young person that wants to speak?
Hello, I'm Alejandra Lopez from Edison High School, and I'm here presenting one of FNL's many chapters. So, as you heard, we've been doing a sticker shot campaign, which basically, we go to different liquor stores, and we place stickers on, like, six packs of beers or larger. And with this, we're hoping that adults, you know, when they buy the beer, they read the sticker, and they're like, oh, you know, we shouldn't, I shouldn't be giving my kids or, like, any young people alcohol. And as well as in other chapters, like the Roosevelt chapter, they've been doing different, like, things, like presentations, or they've been going on, like, radio shows. And so I just want to say thank you to the council members for supporting us in our work.
Do you want to add something, Yami?
Thank you so much, Council President Soria. Just so much gratitude to the council members, thank you for recognizing the young people in their work. I know that they have met on several occasions with all the council members on the work that they do, but this is all about lifting up youth voice on this issue. Young people, this really matters to them, you know, access to alcohol and the issue of underage drinking is really prevalent in our community, and so they're working steadily on this. But this work cannot be done alone. They have incredible adult allies who work with them on the campuses at Sunnyside, Edison, and Roosevelt. And also, it has to be youth and adults working together in partnership in order to create change in our community. So, it's incredible, young people like Alejandra who are doing this work, and we have about 450 young people that we work with across the county on this issue alone. So, thank you so much again, Council President Soria, we appreciate everything that you have done for our young people and recognizing them.
Awesome, thank you so much. We now will turn it to the Clerk, if you want to go ahead and read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas the California Friday Night Live program was developed in Sacramento in 1984 as the model program for the state of California and was designed to reduce alcohol use and other problems among young people by building partnerships for positive and healthy development that engage the youth as active leaders in their communities. And whereas Fridays, and whereas youth in Friday Night Live programs experience a safe environment that includes physical and emotional safety, they also experience opportunities for community engagement and are afforded opportunities for leadership and advocacy that include decision-making and governance, learning to express their opinions constructively, and taking action on issues or projects that they can care about outside of the program in their community and schools. And whereas during the month of April, youth at more than 600 sites raise awareness in their communities, counties throughout the state of California in order to reduce underage drinking by mobilizing their communities with a unified call of action, "Not on My Watch." Now therefore be it resolved that the month of April 2018 be recognized as Friday Night Live Month, and the City of Fresno Mayor and City Council applauds and thanks the leadership staff, volunteers, and youth who are committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations, and hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 to be Underage Drinking Prevention and Friday Night Live Month in the City of Fresno.
Next is Councilmember Capriolio, I think you have two proclamations. Yeah, I think I'm quicker than you.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a great afternoon, for sure. And I have two proclamations, and we're going to step it up now. So, first and foremost, everyone knows the crown jewel of District 4 is Fresno State. And so today, we're going to honor the Collegian, their newspaper at Fresno State. This is the second year we've done this, because they get so many awards, it's incredible. And these young, talented people need to be recognized. So, just a fact, background check, the Collegian has served Fresno State since 1922, that's 96 years. And no council member, Chavez, I'm not that old. We have a running joke of, who's the oldest? We all know it's Lee Brand, the mayor. But anyway, he was here earlier. So, if Mr. Delgado and the Collegian team, you guys want to come down here and join me? And of course, our good friend, George Hotsteller, who's been coaching and teaching, as he has done many of the council members over the years. So, by way of facts, come on down. The, George, come over here, this is the old folks section. Come over here. So, well, I'm right there with you, don't worry. So, come on, kids, we need to crowd in a little bit. I should say students, pardon me. Anyway, all their work and dedication has resulted in some stunning results in these last competitions that they've engaged in. So, for instance, they've won 10 awards between the events. They include three first-place awards, one second-place award, two third-place awards, and it goes on and on and on. So, great job, fantastic, and we'll recite some of those in more detail with the proclamation. So, I want to thank you guys for putting Fresno State on the map again. It's part of that boldness that Dr. Castro has instilled in all of us. And I'm an alum of Fresno State, and I'm so proud to be there. It's people and students like you, they make all of us so proud of our university. George, you want to say a couple of things?
Yes, thank you, Paul, I appreciate it. But if I may ask my Collegian colleagues to turn around and take a look at the dais, if you would, please. And you'll see, the, from the city attorney's office, over here, the city clerk, our council members, the legislature, the administration representing Mayor Brand. And it's, the concept I want to talk about is kicking the can down the road. And that's a concept that this, these public servants, Councilmember Capriolio, they do not embrace, that when tough decisions need to be made, they don't postpone it to somebody else, they make it themselves. And it's very hard to do. A lot of passion in this chamber, a lot of controversy, and they make the hard decisions. And I hope the folks on the dais will take a look at these young men and women, because the Collegian is going through a bit of a crisis itself, a financial crisis, much like the council, the City Hall did during the Great Recession. And they are making the hard decisions to ensure the survivability of the Collegian. The Collegian is a public trust, serving 25,000 students and the staff and faculty of 5,000. And so, there's a symmetry here between you two, and I hope you two appreciate each other. And let me add too, that just as it was at City Hall during the height of the Great Recession, the number-one solution at the Collegian to get back on our feet is to get rid of me.
I totally disagree with that, George. It is, each one introduce yourself, and then we'll read the proclamation.
My name is Benet Khan, I'm a reporter for the Collegian. My name is Selena Falcon, and I'm the Arts and Entertainment Editor.
My name is Resmi Conias, and I'm the News Editor.
My name is Chu Hye Yang, and I'm the Managing Editor.
And my name is Chris Ansel Rodriguez Delgado, and I'm the Editor-in-Chief of the Collegian.
Excellent, and let's hear about those 10 awards they just won.
Whereas the Collegian is the premier student-run newspaper of California State University Fresno, which has served the Fresno State community for 96 years as a go-to news outlet for those wishing to stay up to date on all things Fresno State. And whereas the Collegian submitted production items for consideration at both the Associated Collegiate Press, ACP, 2018 Midwinter Convention, Best of Show Awards, and the 2018 California College Media Association Awards Banquet. The events were held in Long Beach, California, from March 1st through the 3rd, 2018, and were intended to recognize merit in college collegiate journalism across the United States. Whereas the Collegian's recognition included first place in best photo illustration, best online advertisement, and best non-breaking news writing, second place in best illustration slash cartoon, third place in best advertising special sections, and best newspaper website, fifth place in best four-year more-than-weekly newspaper, seventh place in best website for large schools, and honorable mentions in best mobile site and best sales promotion materials. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby congratulate all those at the Collegian for their role in sharing with the entire nation the immense talent, creativity, and intellect honored at Fresno State University. The Collegian continues their proud tradition of excellence in journalism. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Brand, and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 19, 2018, to be the Collegian Day in the City of Fresno.
All right, that's all inspiring, as are future leaders right there and future writers. The next proclamation is really, really a true deep honor for me to present today. As you know, my grandfather was a World War I Army veteran, my dad was World War II, United States Navy, and my brother was United States Marine Corps, Vietnam veteran, 1966. And so with that, we want to honor all the men and women from that era and from that war, those that have served and those that continue to serve. And this is kind of our way, a small way of saying thank you. Thank you, guys, for everything that you've done for our community. And as part of that, I want to honor the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Committee, the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Committee. And you all came together for a specific purpose, and I'll let you guys talk about that and address it when you come up here. In fact, why don't we all come up here? Where's Denise? Where are you? Come on down here. David, Austin, everybody, let's all, come on, this is a great, a great morning or afternoon for all of us. Come on in, we'll get nice and close here. So, these folks put together this committee, and I'll let them talk a little bit more about it for you. I also wanted to tell you that I mentioned earlier, not all of you are here, but in our council comments, we're going to have a Heroes' Welcome Home reception at the Grizzlies' baseball game on April 28. So, before the game starts, we're going to blow it up and thank these veterans, and thank their service, and thank their families, and thank everyone that has done these things for our wonderful country to enable us to go to ballgames and to have events like this and to celebrate government like we have here. So, they truly have earned our respect, and we all know that. And I just want to say, when you see veterans, we always say thank you, but when you see a Vietnam veteran, say welcome home. Thank you and welcome home. It's really, really important. Who would like to speak first?
Sure, why not? Thank you so much for having us here, and I'm getting emotional just thinking that here we are. This is my husband, Steve Baronian, and he's a Vietnam veteran, and so he's my inspiration. I just, being married 30 years, I've heard the stories many times of what our Vietnam veterans experienced when they came home, and it wasn't a whole lot of anything. It was kind of a war that nobody talked about. And it's been 50 years, and I think it's finally time to welcome these men and women home from Vietnam and give them the Heroes' Welcome Home that they never received. I want to do it to honor my husband, but in being able to do that, I've gotten to know other amazing Vietnam veterans like Smokey and so many others that we've met along the way as we've been putting this event together. And it would not have happened if it weren't for these men and women standing up here with me. David Black pulled together just some amazing leaders in our community, business owners, law enforcement, it just goes on and on and on. And so I'm really speechless, well, not really, but I'm a comm major, I could talk all day up here. I'm just overwhelmed at the generosity of our community to help us make this happen. Grizzlies has partnered with us, Amvets has partnered with us, and this just would not be happening without all of these key players. So, thank you to everybody, I love you, and I am forever indebted to you.
We all are forever indebted to the men and women. If each of you could introduce yourself, and if you want to mention your organization, that'd be great. I'll start down here.
John Stockton, Fresno Grizzlies.
Corey Petennis with Meets2U.
I'm Ray Ortiz with the Fresno Grizzlies.
The voice of the Grizzlies.
Smokey Rickert, retired Air Force, and also the Executive Director for AMVETS for the state of California.
He's displaying a purple hat, I might add, on his lapel, so thank you very much.
Steve Baronian, Vietnam veteran.
Thank you.
And it's been 50 years, and I think it's finally time to welcome these men and women home from Vietnam and give them the heroes' welcome home that they never received. I want to do it to honor my husband. But in being able to do that, I've gotten to know other amazing Vietnam veterans like Smokey and so many others that we've met along the way as we've been putting this event together. And it would not have happened if it weren't for these men and women standing up here with me. David Black pulled together just some amazing leaders in our community, business owners, law enforcement. It just goes on and on and on. And so I'm really speechless, well, not really.
Good, great so far.
I'm a comm major. I could talk all day up here. I'm just overwhelmed at the generosity of our community to help us make this happen. Grizzlies has partnered with us, Ambets has partnered with us, and this just would not be happening without all of these key players. So thank you to everybody. I love you, and I am forever indebted to you.
We all are forever indebted to the men and women. If each of you could introduce yourself, and if you want to mention your organization, that'd be great. I'll start down here.
John Stockton, Fresno Grizzlies.
Corey Petendas with Meets2U.
I'm Ray Ortiz with the Fresno Grizzlies.
The voice of the Grizzlies.
Smokey Rickert, retired Air Force, and also the Executive Director, Frambit, for the state of California.
He's displaying a purple hat, I might add, on his lapel, so thank you very much.
Steve Baronian, Vietnam veteran.
Thank you. Start over here.
Anthony Primavere, Fior di Pasta.
Art Hernandez, 144th Fighter Wing.
Emiliano Avila, 144th Fighter Wing.
Lenny Luhon, 144th Fighter Wing, and Fresno Police Department.
Trina Brugetti, Fresno VA Hospital.
Tim Petendas, Alena Foods.
Richard Crowe, retired Army and owner, my wife Kathy, of Black Crow Vineyards.
David Black, retired Navy, Fresno Pacific University, and Second Vice Commander for Ambets, state of California.
Round of applause for these wonderful, wonderful people and veterans. Sincerely, thank you all. You can read the proclamation, please.
Whereas the Vietnam War was one of our nation's longest foreign wars surpassed only by war on terrorism in Afghanistan, the Vietnam War claimed lives of more than 58,000 of our nation's finest young men and women. Over 2.9 million Americans actively served in the Vietnam War, with over 300,000 of the active-duty service members receiving visible and non-visible wounds, and as a result of these wounds, become severely disabled. And whereas Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day will be celebrated on Saturday, April 28th, 2018, at Chachansky Park, Fresno, as an honor and celebration of the sacrifice these veterans have made to our country. This would not be possible without the dedication and collaborative, collaboration of several amazing organizations, to include Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Group, the Fresno Grizzlies, the Fresno State Bulldog Blitz, Skydiving Team, and Alena Foods, to name a few. Whereas our country is indebted to the countless sacrifices of these American heroes, and we recognize that our thanks and gratitude will never be enough to express our appreciation. These veterans, these Vietnam veterans showed the citizens of our nation what it means to preserve in a time of social strife. These veterans set an example for our combat leadership and endure the nation's military to this day. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand, the City of Fresno Council members, and our community express our deepest appreciation and gratitude to the veterans of the Vietnam War and all who served and continue to serve our great country. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 19, 2018, to be Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Fresno.
Yep, today is your day. Thank you all so much. This is the partnership that makes things great. And remember, when you see a Vietnam veteran, not only thank him or her for their service, but say welcome home. That's a really big deal. I just told my colleague here that my brother was a corporal in the United States Marine Corps. His uniform is in my office right back here, every day, every day with me. Thank you all very much.
Next, we have a special presentation by the City Manager's Office and the Public Works Department, recognition of Randall Morrison as the ASCE 2018 Outstanding Civil Engineer in Public Practice.
All right. Good afternoon. Well, you know, it's always a great day when we can recognize exceptional employees, as we did earlier today with Employee of the Quarter. But it's a really great honor when an outside professional organization chooses to bestow that honor and award on one of our very own. And so it's our great pleasure to recognize Randall Morrison as the American Society of Civil Engineer, Regional Chapters, 2018 Outstanding Civil Engineer in Public Practice. Yep, and we'll have Randall come up, and if you want to bring your family as well. I want to share a little bit about Randall for those who don't know him. He's been a member of our team for about 10 years, started as a supervising engineering technician and project, great project manager. And it's been my pleasure to see him grow professionally, getting his engineering license, becoming Special Projects Engineer to handle Fulton Street and High-Speed Rail, later become Deputy City Engineer, and now our Assistant Public Works Director. Our City Manager has some things to add as well.
So Randall, I wanted to say congratulations. As many of you know, I worked very, very closely with Randall on the Fulton Project. And I can't think of anybody else who is more deserving of this award. You took your work home, so thank you, Jen. I even recall calling you when you were visiting the Statue of Liberty for a conference call. So I don't care what deadline we gave you, you brought it home. We are so lucky to have you, so thank you for your leadership, and congratulations again. Can we all give Randall a big round of applause, please?
So I'm just getting over cold, but I'll, so I'll keep this short. But I just want to thank everybody for showing up, our Public Works family. It's really, it means a lot to me, my family, for showing up. Obviously, that's most important. But also want to thank our administration and council for honoring me. This award was really important and really an honor to receive it, and it's great to get the extra recognition, so thank you.
Thank you.
We had one item pulled from consent, which I actually pulled. Let me see what item. It was Item 1M. And so I'm just going to make, if it's okay, I don't think that there needs to be any presentation. I just thought it was important for me to pull this item, just to make some public comment on the appointments. I generally don't pull any appointments, but this one, to me, is important. I believe, you know, greatly in the work that the Fresno Housing Authority does. So I'm only going to speak to the Fresno Housing Authority appointment. I've looked at the other one, the Tower Design, District Design Review Committee, and I think Dave will be an excellent addition to the committee, so I want to thank the administration for appointing him. The only comments really that I wanted to make is that I know that Tara will be replacing Commissioner right now, Verna Santos. And I will say that I value the work that Commissioner Verna Santos has done over the last two years. She came in and actually filled in the remainder of the two years of a previous commissioner that stepped down, and, you know, I greatly appreciate that work. I think that if you guys look at her track record and her resume, if you guys got a chance, and I'll, you know, just address my colleagues that got a chance to look at the resumes and the experience that folks bring, but we got a little sheet. But I don't think it compares to the great experience that this woman brings to the Fresno Housing Authority. She's a Harvard Law grad. She graduated from UCLA. She's obviously here, worked very hard, and now is a solo practitioner, was previously a federal prosecutor, understands the community very well. And one of the things that is important to me as well, that I will mention, and I know that I've mentioned this to the administration, is that our boards are reflective of the community that we serve and we represent. And I think when we're, when we look at the Fresno Housing Authority, it serves a number of disadvantaged members of our community. And I think that Verna is a extreme, stream, extremely well, does a well job in doing the advocacy for our community. And so I'm just, you know, I guess sad to see that she wasn't reconsidered to be appointed for a new term. We know that as you join commissions, it takes you about a year, sometimes even two, to learn the process. And so I was just, you know, kind of taken aback that she wasn't considered again to continue serving. So I hope that as the mayor brings future appointments, that one, we're considering also the diversity of that, of the type of diversity that the boards need, and ends up representing the community. I just think that it's a tremendous loss not having, and I think she would have continued to serve another term, and brings great value to the discussions that happen at the Fresno Housing Authority. And so that's why I wanted to raise that, or pull the item. I know that generally, we, the council ends up voting in support generally for all the appointments that are made by the mayor, but I just felt that it was important just because of the type of person that Verna is and the type of work that she's done here in the community to address the issues, in particular, the issues of housing and housing, affordable housing in our community. So I just wanted to make sure that I put those statements on the record, so that she knows that we value the work that she's done over the last two years, and that I hope that as we move forward, when there's future vacancies, that she may be someone that you guys reconsider, because I think that she has the knowledge, the passion, and the understanding of the issues that impact low-income communities here in the City of Fresno. And so I wanted to be able to add those comments to the record. There's a couple of my colleagues that have punched up. Councilmember Brando?
I was going to, but if you guys...
No, go ahead, Wilma.
Okay, Council President, I appreciate those comments. And as the mayor mentioned to you earlier this week, we are happy, he's happy to meet with Verna, and, but he's very confident in Tara and her ability to serve on the board and her business sense, and he's, he really would appreciate support of this item, for this appointment for the Housing Authority.
No, no, I'm up? Wilma, how long did Verna serve?
I don't know the answer to that.
Two years, okay. All right. Well, a lot of times, I think, when you see new administrations come in, people like to see fresh faces, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Well, it's, am I on? Well, as someone that knows personally Verna Santos, I can't speak more highly of her. She's just tremendous resume, was a U.S. prosecutor, I think she clerked for Chief Justice Sotomayor, just an amazing, capable, qualified individual. But I'm happy to hear that the administration will be meeting with her and considering her. I think there's a number of boards that she would be grateful for in the city and the county as well. But I just, that was a question I had, but you answered it already. Wilma, appreciate that. Thank you.
So there was a motion by Councilmember Brando. Second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? I'm just going to go ahead, actually, can I abstain on that one and then still support the other gentleman being appointed? Yeah. Okay, so I'll go ahead and record my vote in that manner. Do I have to say anything else? City Attorney? Okay, great. Thank you. We will go on to the last thing that we have on the agenda, which is a 2:00 PM item. This is an action pertaining to the mobile vendor's permit. Our City Manager, are you guys going to make the presentation? I thought the mayor...
We are, we have Dan.
Okay, perfect. Dan.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Dan Zacc with the Development and Resource Management Department. We're here today to propose an amendment to the municipal code that would amend the mobile vendor permitting requirements. The food truck and mobile vendor industry has seen a lot of growth in recent years and a lot of diversification in the types of venues that they go to and the types of products offered, and it's really grown a lot nationwide, and Fresno is no exception to that. And what has come to light recently is that some of the permitting requirements have been a little bit challenging for this, you know, growing industry to meet. It came really to light in conjunction with a recent special event. We were able to make that event work with a temporary solution, and this is follow-through to have a permanent change put in place that would be able to see continued growth in that area and continued events with these kinds of vendors and get them all licensed and up to date. This was a partnership between the City's Attorney's Office, RISC, Finance, DARM, to come up with a good solution and find something that works with, for the industry. And so the amendment would change, would remove fingerprinting requirements for all mobile vendors except for ice cream trucks, and it would remove a $500 bond that had been collected as security against non-payment of fees, and it removes insurance requirements and replaces it with indemnification and hold harmless. So it seems like this is a better fit for the industry and makes it a little bit easier for that industry to continue to grow, and we recommend approval. And I'm here, Mike Lima from Finance is here, and we can help you with any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dan, for that presentation. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Come on down. Please state your name, address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kiroz, and my address is 1616 West Morris Avenue, Fresno, 93711. We have mobile shaved ice business. 90% of our business is doing events. Maybe only 1% of it is going around to neighborhoods during the summer, usually just in the month of July, because it's quiet. And I don't, we're in that quandary of being, are you going to put us in the ice cream vendor, or are you going to put us in the mobile food truck avenue? Because fingerprinting is a huge hassle for us. We have part-time seasonal employees, you know, they're usually college students, and they're working for us for two months and then leaving. And so to have to get them fingerprinted every single time is just arduous. And it would, to me, it would be the same thing as having, like, Chuck E. Cheese, having to have all their employees fingerprinted, or having every plumber fingerprinted, because they go into people's houses and the kids are in the houses. I agree with all the stuff trying to streamline the permit process. It is a hassle. And I've put three trucks through. My third truck in 2016, it took me about six months. I had to sit down with Councilmember Olivier and the mayor's office, and I think they may have changed some things, but when you go in for zoning, the form used to ask you what your APN number is, a description of your property, all things that don't pretend to mobile vending. So I do think it is a great thing to address, so that was it.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Counsel, real quickly to address that concern. The definition of ice cream trucks includes only prepackaged frozen or refrigerated desserts. So the ones you make on-site would not be included in this definition.
So then shaved ice would not be?
That's right.
Okay. There's your answer. Nathan, did you want to address the counsel?
Thank you, Madam President. Good seeing all of you again. Nathan Alonso, on behalf of the Fresno Chamber, we are supportive of this item. We think that the mayor and you, the council, have taken a thoughtful approach in helping to address some of the concerns when it comes to fingerprinting, when it comes to permitting, and when it comes to guarding public health, when it comes to the individuals that are serving food out at public events and mobile food vendors throughout the city. So we applaud the mayor, and we applaud you, the council, on bringing this forward, and we ask for your ratification on it.
Thank you. So I'm just going to go ahead and say a couple of comments, because I have the pleasure of work with the administration and with the staff to address the issues, so I want to thank them for giving me the opportunity to be part of the policy conversation. I'm excited to see these changes come forward very quickly, and so I'm just grateful to have been able to be part of that. I know that it's going to help the movement that exists right now here in our community, so that we're encouraging folks to continue doing these special events, in particular here in the downtown area and the Tower District, where we see a lot of these special events happen. So just very proud to join as a sponsor. Councilmember Chavez, did you want to make your comments, since you're a sponsor as well?
Thank you, President. So I just want to thank the administration for working on this issue. I know that we've had some snafus in the past, but I think this is really going to be a big, a big driver for events that we have downtown. I had a chance to attend the Freses event. It was just an amazing event. I hadn't seen that many people.
event. It was just an amazing event. I hadn't seen that many people downtown in a while. And I think this will make it a lot easier for our food vendors and our small businesses to really replicate that elsewhere. I know that there's a big trend in our city moving in that direction for mobile food vendors. And I think it's great, because I think one of the amazing things I saw at the event was there was, there was essentially, people associate food vendors with just taco trucks. But it's not just taco trucks anymore. They had pizza, they had Filipino food, they had, you know, various versions, really an international world food affair. And I think that's great for Fresno, so happy to support this today. Thank you.
Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I want to also join in my congratulations on getting this issue settled. But Woma and I talked, you and I talked about the fingerprinting for the ice cream trucks. And I was glad that one of our residents came and spoke to that, because I know we talked about it a little bit, and I probably have a little heartburn. I'm going to support this item today, because I think it's the right thing to do. But I never quite fully understood what our rationale was behind requiring the ice cream trucks to be the only ones to have the fingerprint requirement. You know, why are we singling the ice cream trucks out? And I know in theory, it's because ice cream trucks deal with a lot of kids and what have you. But I just, I feel like there's not like an epidemic of kids being taken by ice cream truck vendors. I mean, I don't even know if it's happened here in Fresno. Somebody told me it did, maybe like in the 80s or 90s or something. I don't know. But does anyone--
And, excuse me, and historically, I mean, I wasn't here in this position in the 80s or the 90s, but I think it's exactly what you talked about. It is a real definition of somebody who is constantly on the move throughout neighborhoods and really dealing with children, you know, 13 or under. And so that's just been our practice. And my understanding in reaching out and doing some research with other cities as well, it's not an unusual requirement to require the fingerprinting. And so we were happy to work with, you know, council president Soria's office and councilmember Chavez's office to bring this forward and removing that component for the mobile food vendors, but to leave it on for the ice cream trucks.
So maybe, yes, yes, someone just kind of helped me understand, because I'm going to support it, but I really do want to, everyone up on this dais knows how I am about ration, having policies that have some rational threads to it. So--
So if you talked to the unofficial squirrel script keeper of City Hall, Sal Quintero, he'll tell you that there was some incidents that happened, I think it was late 80s, early 90s, where that came about. And I think the rationale behind that is that a lot of these folks do come into contact with children. They'll go and post up close to schools, areas where children are more likely to purchase those products. And I think that was done as a deterrent for individuals that might have some issues where they're not allowed to be around schoolchildren or in that proximity. And that was put in, and I personally think that it's a good idea, just as a deterrent for folks. I wouldn't want something to happen in the city, and something that we could have prevented, and we didn't. And so I think it's just maybe a little, maybe over cautious on that end. But that was the rationale behind that, Councilmember Baines.
Okay. You know, like I said, I don't necessarily know that there's an issue with ice cream vendors. I was a police officer for a while. I don't remember that being an issue at the time. And I should have talked to Sal, you're right, because he probably could have given me the full history, full history on it. So anyhow, it's not going to prevent my support today, but I did want to just at least raise that issue that I'm not exactly sure. Then the ice cream community isn't here to speak up on their own behalf. So far be it for me to do it for them. So I'll be happy to support this item today.
I think you'll still be able to get your ice cream, Oliver.
Well, they may try to kidnap me. I mean, I don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember Baines, for bringing up the issue, because, you know, when I was looking through the ordinance and having kind of the conversations and discussions with the administration, those were some of the same questions that I had. I think I was trying to figure out, how do we rationalize, you know, putting these extra requirements on this particular, this particular type of business? And I think it comes down to the fact that they predominantly deal with kids, young kids. And I think that, as council member Chavez put very well, was that we're trying to err with caution, right, when we're dealing with kids. And so I just did a little bit of research, and so, not here locally, but there are some local jurisdictions that have required fingerprinting for ice cream vendors. And so again, it's not uncommon for other local municipalities to have these types of ordinances and requirements. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and make the motion. Second by councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, that motion carries 6-0 with councilmember Olivier absent. Okay, so next we have closed session. City Attorney?
In closed session, we have three matters. I understand we are postponing the evaluations. First of all, city of Fresno, potential versus county, also BIA versus city of Fresno, and QIST versus city of Fresno. I would not expect any announcements afterwards.
Great, thank you. So we won't be coming back after closed session, so just want to remind folks that we are today a journey in memory of Barbara Bush. Thank you.